Through some of the draft comprehensive plan exercises that we had planned for today. Welcome, everybody, to the June 4th, 2014 Suffolk County Planning Commission. We're going to get started today with the public portion. We have four speakers. Is there anyone else that had requested to speak? All right. At this point, I'll call our first speaker, Annette Catté. Okay. If you can, just spell your name for... If you could, just spell your name for the record.
A-N-T-T-A-U.
Thank you. And you have three minutes.
Okay. Well, I would like to start by saying I hope that everyone read this yesterday. It's a very terrible article. I'm speaking on Katniss Two. I live around the corner from it. It's contrary to what we need or want. There is a plan in place for generating power and the overflow. For overflow, I really wish I wasn't the first speaker. Long Island usually generates more power than it needs. Why this plan to build Katniss Two is aimed to solve summer peak demand, which could be met instead with renewables and with the already existing but never used $4 million direct response system. Energy use is generally declining and/or flatlining, in part because of efficient electronics. Ratepayers will be feeling the bill from Katniss Two for at least 20 years. And Katniss Two is anti-political to New York, and I think I've said that wrong, to New York State's revised energy provision. And as for Mr. Ains' claim regarding modernization, efficiency, and energy, clean energy, a brand-new Katniss Two wouldn't meet the recently required proposed EPA emission standards for New York City Power lines that already exist. And I have a graphic for that. Also, I'd like to say, this is the site plan review. This is a long sight. This is the last thing we need in Yappank. We have messed it. I live just around the corner. The other thing is, unfortunately, I shouldn't hear a member of the school board who stands to receive $9 million from this after bringing in another project in Yappank say, "I'm going to be the richest school..." My school district's going to be the richest in Shoreham. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. The next speaker. Next speaker, Molly Mason.
I'm speaking against the Katniss Two plant.
Excuse me, ma'am. One second, if you could. Just spell your name for the record.
M-O-L-L-Y-M-A-S-O-N.
Great. And you have three minutes.
I'm speaking against the Katniss Two plant. This project will have significant adverse effects on the use and conservation of energy in our community. Specifically, the project's excessive 752-megawatt size will foreclose both the development of renewable energy sources as well as repowering of existing legacy groundfield plants such as Port Jefferson. The notice of the DES that we went to several meetings about, it was extremely defective for reasons including but not limited to the construction of a megawatt plant of this size will adversely affect all of Brookhaven's ratepayers for decades and decades to come, far more than 20 years. The EIS, DES, DEIS fails to address a number of fundamental security requirements. It fails to take a hard look at reasonable alternatives to the proposal, including but not limited to the consideration of one or more configurations of smaller than the 752-megawatt plant, as well as the consideration of improving efficiencies, outputs, and capacities at existing power plants. Secondly, the EIS, DEIS fails to properly assess the cumulative impact of the proposal on the environment, including our energy resources. Rather than consider the impact of the gas supply that must be built to support the plant, the DEIS stated that the root of the gas pipeline has not been determined yet. It will be built by someone other than Katniss and is under the jurisdiction of the Public Service Commission or the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. SECP regulations require that the DEIS contain full disclosure of the impacts of the proposed action on the use and conservation of energy, which for an electric generating facility must include a demonstration that the facility will satisfy electric generating capacity needs or other electric system needs in a manner that's consistent with the most recent state energy plan, the New York Energy Highway. The DEIS, EIS, fails to provide a reasoned elaboration of how this project fits into statewide mandates, because it does not. The application does not consider the growth inducing impact of the proposal. As LIPA has acknowledged, energy demand declined by 3% last year and is expected that conservation and other efficiencies will incur a downward trend. So the logic of putting 752-megawatts of additional energy in eastern Long Island and the commitment of 100% take or pay to the ratepayers, whether that capacity is used or not, will create possibly an explosion of growth in Brookhaven Town. And that will occur in the Carmen's watershed area, potentially undoing important efforts undertaken recently to limit development in that area. The DEIS, EIS, citing also constitutes a legal segmentation under SECP. The power plant and the gas pipelines supplying it cannot be considered separately. Contrary to the statement made by Katniss in other hearings, the Public Service Commission and involved agency has actually advised the town board in its comment on scoping of the DEIS on this plan, that the gas line must be included in the DEIS. And the ratepayers will be funding 100% of this project. Katniss won't be putting up any of their own money, and you should deny the project.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker.
I'm sorry. Somebody wants to say it. There we go.
Our next speaker is Mary Ann Johnston. If you could, please, just spell your name for the record.
Mary Ann Johnston, J-O-H-N.
Is that on? Is that on?
So, now it seems to be.
Thank you.
Mary Ann Johnston, J-O-H-N-S-T-L-N. Mary Ann, one word, no need. I have a question. You have a public portion, and you have things around the agenda. Will the public be able to individually address those items as you hear them?
No.
No. So the public portion is the only opportunity that this board gives the public to speak. Three minutes. Three minutes. It's appalling. Absolutely appalling. This is a public project that will be financed by the public, and the public has so little say as to be almost irrelevant. What I'm trying to say to you today is this is a site and a plan in which there has been no demonstrative need for it to be built. Secondly, it cannot meet the EPA standards met and announced yesterday by the Obama Administration. Thirdly, it doesn't have a plan for its delivery system of gas. I mean, really, would you buy a car that needed gasoline without a tank? I mean, realistically, this is a plan that does not fit into the character of the community. But when we look at the interest of justice, and the DGIS for this plan doesn't address the interest of justice. This is a community that has born a regional landfill, a concrete crushing plant, multiple waste transfer sites, a mega compost facility that has put radioactivity into our groundwater, and it all sits within the precious Carmen's River watershed. It's almost as if a bunch of schizophrenics sat down to plan this community. How can we offset everything we tried to do to protect the environment in this area by allowing inappropriate development within that watershed? Why did we buy Mr. Kelly's Avalon Bay? When due south of that and closer to the river, we're destroying property. This is a problem for us. This is a serious issue. And when you look at a site plan, it's not a drawing on a piece of paper, folks. Without everything else that goes into the structure they want to build, you don't have a site plan. You have to have in-site planned consideration, roadway, traffic, development, delivery systems. They don't even discuss delivery systems here. We've discussed pilots with local school districts. Those school districts seem to only see dollar signs. They're not interested, even if we're blowing up nuclear bombs in the watershed. So respectfully, I ask that you deny this application.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Bruce Miller.
Due diligence has not been done by...
If you could, sir, just spell your name for the record. Thank you.
Due diligence has not been done by Brookhaven Town on the Katniss Two project, and Suffolk County must finally get this right. All the ratepayers of Suffolk County will be facing needless increases in electrical power costs on an unconscionably high rate base if this project is allowed to go through. Suffolk taxpayers will be responsible for sorcery damages for Port Jefferson Union Free District Six if this issue is not resolved favorably. Wind and solar expansion will be stymied for 20 years with this oversized politically-driven project. One need only check Mark Harrington's article in yesterday's Newsday to know the power assumptions for the future given by LIPA are politically driven and do not stand up to energy study scrutiny. Port Jefferson has commissioned the prestigious London Economics to do studies on projected use, and LIPA numbers just do not hold up. Additionally, cleanup and repower Port Jefferson, and the London study concludes all Long Island ratepayers saved $127 million. Power of Katniss Two and Long Island ratepayers incur a 3% increase in rates. The Yappank Giga Project will see Suffolk County ratepayers paying for capacity not generated, just as we did the last Katniss project. The 2013 New York State Commission report by the Potomac Economics corroborates our figures. Another plant in Yappank at 752-megawatts is simply too large and would require substantial environmental gouging of gas pipeline trenches across the Pine Barrens, Ecology, Carmen River watershed, and Megathy Aquifer. All this is unnecessary. The infrastructure already exists in Port Jefferson. As to the electrical infrastructure, the Katniss project adds much cost to Suffolk ratepayers because of its redundancy. This past winter, the major fuel used in Yappank was oil. And not only, not fully discussed in the Brookhaven EIS, is the massive trucking of oil during cold winter months as supplies fail to materialize of gas. This will expand geometrically the Katniss Two trucking fleets are enlisted to meet the new demands. This presents a risk of spills and fires in a sensitive area. The Brookhaven EIS also did a very shoddy job about endangered species, and Andrea Baraka has yet to speak to you about that. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, sir. Our next speaker is Andrea Baraka. If you could, just spell your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Andrea Baraka, A-N-D-R-E-A-B-A-R-R-A-C-C-A. And I'm also here to talk about Katniss Two. And I think that the question that we all have to ask ourselves is what is Suffolk County's future? We're not talking about the now and our short-sighted goals. We're looking at the long term. And I represent that long term, as do my brothers, my sisters, and my friends. I plan to be here for a while unless we continue making bad decisions with regards to our environment and what we're doing here in Suffolk County. As everybody has said today, I think everybody's given some very good reasons as to why we should not approve this plan and why we should stop it before it proceeds any further. First and foremost, Suffolk County received an F recently on its air quality. And this isn't going to help this project. We're looking at new EPA proposed regulations that say in 2020, we should have 635 pounds per megawatt of carbon, just carbon. What are you even talking about? Methane and all the other greenhouse gases that's yet to be determined. Katniss Two is still going to exceed those expectations, which have been put in place for power plants that already exist. So we're looking to spend $3 billion on a power plant that's not even going to meet expectations for power plants that already exist in the state of New York. I see that as a big problem. 1.1 gigawatts is going to be centered 1.3 miles away from the Carmen's River. What are we thinking? On top of that, we have to have a pipeline that's going to possibly run through the Carmen's River or run through the Sound and through our dunes, or from somewhere else that it's going to be piped in. Fossil fuels, is that where we want our future in Suffolk County to be? We could be set in peace for the rest of New York, for the rest of the East Coast, and we are going to be falling behind in the Jurassic Age, buried under our own carbon footprint as a result of this plan. On top of that, if you have read the environmental impact statement, it is seriously flawed. One of the biggest flaws in this plan has to do with endangered species. One sentence, one sentence. It says, "Since there are no wetland streams or other aquatic habitats present on or in the vicinity of this project site, endangered northern long-eared bats are not expected to be anywhere there, not in that 81.48 project area, which they only studied three-quarters of an acre of closely, during daylight hours, not during peak summertime, and when those bats wouldn't have been present in the first place." But according to Michael Fishman, certified wildlife biologist, endangered species specialist who studies bats, he says that that statement is absolutely inaccurate. These bats are on Long Island, they are on the Carmen's River, and they're likely on that site.
Thank you very much.
No attention has been given to that either.
We appreciate your time. Thank you. At this point, we're going to close the public portion, and we would like to start our guest speaker around the presentations. If you could, Mr. Tulio Bertoli, Commissioner of Planning, if you can come up and make your presentation.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Thank you.
I was speaking with my friend Mary Ann Johnston. She reminded me, it's my fifth anniversary of being in the town of Brookhaven. And during that time, we have brought a number of initiatives in front of you, projects, codes, things that I mentioned. We've come to try and change some of the components of how certainly we plan our town and hopefully now we plan our region. And today's presentation speaks to that, but also addresses perhaps alternative issues as well, as you will see. On the left-hand side, you will see the Carmen's River Plan. You approved it in October. It sought to preserve 9,000 acre watershed through a series of mechanisms, the rezonings, acquisitions, and through transfer development rights. It sought to, similarly through that, create a public policy that we would preserve land in terms of a redemption component in three codes, the mitigation code, the MAF code, and a PRC code. It sought to embrace the notion of sustainability, that we follow stewards to our built environment. We are taught to preserve. It's our responsibility to preserve what we have for our future use. On the other side is Rockhamah Hub project. Rockhamah Hub project, like the Carmen's River Plan, is a very large project. It singularly talks about how we want to manage our growth in those areas, redevelopment, near transit, walkability. It too talks about the notion of sustainability as well, the green architecture of the building. Now, there are some that might say that these two plans have nothing in common. And I can assure you is that the chief architect of both of these plans, not only do they have very much in common, they complement each other. One cannot exist without the other. It lays a blueprint for how the town wishes to preserve and at the same time, how we want to manage our growth. In many ways, they are twinsons of different mothers. And so today, what I want to go through is the project in the context of that general framework. You going to handle this stuff? You going to go to the next speaker? Rockhamah Hub, the project has been in front of you on a couple of occasions. In November of 2010, we came before you with a plan that VHB promoted, a town initiative. At that time, you imposed three, I'm sorry, four conditions on the approval. And I want to address a little of those to indicate how we address them. One was density shift, this whole notion that we transfer development from one area to the other in relative open space. And as I've indicated, I believe that a number of initiatives that the town has created through our redemption components, through our codes, seek to address that element. And in fact, I believe we're the only town in the county that has those particular components that are in place. The second element of that was a change of zone referral, and the referral to Suffolk County Planning for the proposed change of zone to the Rockhamah Hub TOD has been made, therefore satisfying this element of that condition. The third was public safety. And in our town code, there is a chapter, Chapter 20, that specifically addresses public safety, and in addition, town supervisor stepped up reinforcement of that code as well. And then the last condition at that point was energy efficiency. And as I've indicated, that not only does our code, but our master developer is very intent in making his buildings be the kinds of models for green architecture and redevelopment. So I believe that these four conditions were met out of the 2010 resolution. Today before you is a plan somewhat different in size and scope, and I'll go through it quickly with you. I think you missed one slide. Yeah. If you stand on the parking garage at Rockhamah, you look out on kind of a T.S. Eliot type of suburban wasteland. It is a mishmash. You take your life into your hands, dropping anybody off there, people double, triplepark, there's taxis, buses, cabs, everything occurs at that location. Next slide. The area around it itself is a series of closed, slung commercial buildings that have been disinvested. Analysis of this was done, and I heard it was moved now. It is, of course, singularly the largest train station on Long Island in terms of ridership, I'm sorry, in Suffolk County. It generates 17,000 riders with the new track. It's estimated to increase to 27,000 riders at any peak time, 6,500 passengers. And there are 30 weekday and 33 weekday eastbound trains, 30 westbound trains. And of course, it's a little over an hour to get to Penstone. In its regional context, it's interesting. Of course, it is near the expressway and the airport and all of that, but in the early 1900s, Long Island developed among its train lines, north, central, and lower. And sequentially, each of the train line had a series of villages. That suburbia changed into a different transportation corridor, which centered around north, east, west, in terms of the expressway and north sack. Rockhamah Hub merges those two transportation systems, so that it has ready access by all the components of the transportation systems that have been laid down over the last 100 years. Next slide. Zoning is what you would have expected of an area that was developed at some time. It has a low E1 residential area, there's some G commercial zones, and there's L1 that's crafted around there as well. Next slide. We began, certainly, I've been at this for about five years, with a series of site studies and trying to approximate how the development would occur. There were along railroad avenue, three significant points that we looked at, two arrival points from both sides, and then the center, which was the train station itself. Next slide. Did a number of series of sketches to begin to isolate on how we were going to zone this particular parcel, and a lot of it had to do with walkability, we've done a certain distance. So more importantly, how the massing of the project would start. It would obviously be higher, the train station tapering down to meet the two stories. And from an east-west, we saw that that same capability could occur because of the location near the hotel. The sketches continued to develop, and the VHB plan that was done took these components and crafted it into a land use plan that came before you. This was an earlier sketch that's tried to separate where the mixed components would be in terms of the orange, where the more residential orange, which would be the red orange. Next. These were a number of studies that we did three-dimensional wise, because we wanted to make sure that the massing and the scale of the project would somehow merge itself with the adjoining communities. Next. And finally, the VHB plan that we created is what you see. There's a series of three-dimensional studies up top, the lower element called for units that were three, four-story above parking. And it was about this time that we saw that we needed a different approach, that we... I'm sorry. One step ahead. Next slide.
Do you have that before?
No, forward. We also saw that, and I guess it's again one of my pet peeves, I don't want to offend any attorney that sits on the board or in the audience.
We appreciate that, Commissioner.
But attorneys have crafted zoning codes for many, many years, and it's always been my... The way they're trained, of course, is to think in terms of black and white. And as architects, we always like to think in color, I suppose, where we want to look at the maximum amount of flexibility in how we approach our code. So from early on, we knew that this was going to be a form-based code that provided flexibility. This is a 10-year project. That could be two or three economic cycles. We wanted to give developer the flexibility to adjust market conditions as it would occur. Additionally, we did not want the emphasis to be on FAR density. We wanted to literally look at the foreign components. Next slide. It was at this time that we went out for an RFP. We selected at that time Jen Bobcobb and the Tritech Organization. We felt that out of the four proposals, they best understood the direction that we were going. And we also wanted to make sure that the implementation and the creation of the plan itself worked together. We did not want a plan that would ultimately sit on somebody's shelf. As a matter of fact, if you've been to my office, I don't even have any shelves in my office for anything to sit on. So the point was to create a developer, move forward in the design, the actual design component together. Next slide. And as we started to work with them, we found that we were very much simpatico with their approach. And we had marketer analysts, we had architects, we had any number of individuals that we were working with. We certainly looked at the traffic implications, that was a key component. And from early on, we did all series of studies to make sure that we clearly understood how these particular uses were going to be separated. Next slide. What was important to them, and certainly important to us, was the phasing of the project, how things become online. And we talked a lot about how infrastructure would suddenly place, how even financing for the project would occur. So we wanted to address as many realistic components in the development of this project through its lifetime. Here, there was a series of three-dimensional studies that went along with the phasing plan. Next. We took a look at how the train station itself would interact with railroad avenue or to create a central rival point or a district for the mixed use. And here, one of the earlier studies that bridged those two entry components with the train station. And out of this, we started looking at some three-dimensional components. Essentially, what we were trying to arrive at was to see how the massing and the visual components would be crafted into a code. Up top, you see the three locations and three points of view. Up top, you see the three locations and three points of view. One is looking down Railroad Avenue, one the arrival point at the plaza, and the last one looking further down on Main Street and its relationship to the overall mass. Next slide. With that, we crafted the front part of the form-based code, which was the regulating plan. Each of the elements, each of the districts, would have its separate criteria that related to it, that overall would achieve the design objectives of the project. Next slide. Code itself, I believe is about 20 pages, about 17 visual, three pages of legalese. We worked methodically through all the elements from signage to setbacks to tree planting, street sections. We, we made sure that every element of the visual components was somehow crafted into each of the districts. So as a developer came and looked at a particular section, that they would have all the criteria relating to that and can propose their, that section of the project. Next slide. Some more elements of the form-based code, really begins to explain how the graphic component merges. We were concerned about the street sections, we kept trying to shrink it as much as possible because we always felt that the, the more you could shrink a road section, the more you reduce the speed of the cars that will go through the project. Again, more street sections. There are various types relating to the density and relating back to the traffic component. Next, please. Final drawing relates to the district analysis, which restricts you to height and the criteria that is set up in conjunction with the regulating plan as well as the individual elements. So, the final version, next slide, for the EIS was 1,350 to 1,450 multifamily residential units. About 190,000 plus or minus of retail space primarily located along Railroad Avenue. And a mix of about 350,000 of office and commercial space with some private space provided.
Tulio, can you add in a final word on the diagram, the current, the current parking garage is just for frame of reference?
Yeah, it's right in the center. Right here.
And that would, okay, thank you.
That would remain.
Yeah, got it, thank you.
What wants to understand when they do seek, whether they're looking at the maximum density component for us. And certainly, the market will guide what the overall development will, will be as it runs out of life of the project. Here are just a set of visual images that Miles Volken architects, Tritech's architects developed with us, that begins to capture some of what we feel the ultimate design will look like. This is looking down Railroad Avenue. You can see that the intent is either you have residential above office or retail, or vice versa, office over retail to provide the developer with the component mix. Next. We are always very concerned about the arrival point in Ronkonkoma, so that you arrived and then there was a giant plaza in front of you, that there's some screening in front of the parking garage that you can see off into the distance. An image showing the intersection of Railroad Avenue and Hawkins Avenue. The project is at its maximum perceived as four stories over parking, which is beyond that, you get into a different construction classification type, and we did not feel it was warranted to go beyond that height. Next slide is of Hawkins Avenue. We noted that there isn't any predominant architecture that we have to respond to in Ronkonkoma, so we tried to create elements that would confront the street and create a notion of the street scape. Next slide, please. Hawkins and Union has a different styling as opposed to the other portion of the project. But in general, the residential is about three stories. Next. Another view, the intersection of Union and Carroll assumes a different type of architecture as well. And the final reflection I have for you today, it was about 1947, I believe, that Arthur Levitt and Sons crafted the suburban model, which was a single-family house out on the plains of Hempstead. For better or worse, that model served us in the last 20 or 30 years. We've certainly seen the problems inherent with it. But as I've indicated to you, the previous model was to build around our train lines. And we believe that in many ways, this is a return to that model. And Ronkonkoma seeks, and projects like it, seek to return to concentrate our growth in those areas where we feel that the transportation components can, can tangle. Additionally, it seeks to, to do this by responding also to demographics, generation Y, a generation, the millennial kids actually, and baby boomers. What drove Arthur Levitt and Sons were the primary family unit. So we just have a whole set of demographics that, that's responding. So I want to end this by just indicating to you that this is a plan that's taken four to five years in the process. I've come before you, this is the third time, I believe. And we are hoping for your approval on this. But we really feel that it begins to respond to the number of initiatives, you know, all too often, as a theoretician and a practitioner, it's hard to, to make theory and practicality kind of merge together. And we believe that this does. And, and also, all too often, I get asked to attend certain lectures, and people are always theorizing about what we should and shouldn't do. And reminded, what Mark Twain used to say is to be good as noble, to show others how to be good as noble and far less troubled. And the point here is that we have taken a step in trying to address all the issues that everyone seems to talk about, brain drain, things of that nature. And at the same time, in comparison, I think Adrian indicated at the end, but as I've indicated to you, to us, here in Brookhaven...
Thanks for pointing that out.
I had a speech all set for you, and you weren't here.
Please, now's the time.
I compare this to the Carnes River Plan and how one seeks to tell us where we should preserve and how we should preserve, and Ronkonkoma Hub tells us how we should manage our growth. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Commissioner Bertoli. I certainly appreciate your leadership and the leadership of the previous supervisor as well as the current one, who've taken this project from an idea to what we see in front of us, which is something approaching a reality, which is certainly very exciting for Long Island and particularly for Suffolk County. Questions for Commissioner Bertoli from members of the commission regarding to the presentation? Commissioner Finn?
I just said, I don't have a question. I said about, well, actually, I do have a question, but I just wanted to proceed. Tulio, you're correct, this is the third time, thank you for coming here today. I think this is, I think this is something that has to be looked at, not just this project, but just the actions of the town of Brookhaven. Because we all know the issues that we have on Long Island. And this is all on the town's motion. And Tulio and his staff and the town has been taking the lead. And, and we, and we see how long it's taken to get to this point. But I think it's commendable, and I think we need to get more townships to take issues head-on and believe in them and, and do things on their own motion, so we can get where the rubber is eventually going to hit the road. With that being said, Tulio, in your best estimate, when do you think, at this stage of the game, with processes that have to follow after you leave here today, what would be a best-case scenario where you have the proverbial shovel around on Brookhaven?
Well, first of all, Tritech has been wonderful to work with. And they've already, we've already started the process of the first phase in terms of schematics. We are poised on June 24th to accept the five, five resolutions that places the project moving forward. So they, they told me they want to move right ahead, so we anticipate starting right away in that first phase.
That's excellent. And then again, that is a good point, you know, that despite, you know, you know, contrary to some belief, but the developer in a sense should be committed because there's a tremendous amount of intestinal fortitude, man-hours, dollars...
Risk.
And risk, well, we don't, but, you know, and, and there, you have to stay at the course. And the fact that you do inform codes is commendable because projects do evolve and do change. And then without certainty of what your project ultimately is going to yield, it does put a lot of other factors. But, you know, this is the first time we've seen this in Suffolk County, and it's, they come before this commission, and we're, I'm excited about it. We just like to see it.
David is correct. I mean, it certainly, I have to thank Mark Lesko and the supervisor in Ramay. The developers are certain, taking a fair amount of risks. Just the code itself, which has never been attempted or done, there's a bit of controversy over it because a prominent land use attorney wanted it to be more legalese than graphics. And I just kept pushing for it to be pure in the context of being more graphics, but we worked through that, and I believe, Mr. Sloan, I think you were happy with the compromise.
Very happy.
Just say yes.
Well, it was 20 pages of legalese that he wanted, and no graphics. I wanted 20 pages of graphics and no legalese, and we compromised. It was 19 pages of graphics on one page.
I think Commissioner Finn's point as well, taken with regard to the town's emotions, is very important, and the town show leadership, and I'd prefer to see a similar thing with under Frank D'Arubius's leadership in Smithtown with regard to, with Hot Dog, with the towns taking the initiative to set the stage for where the development needs should happen or could happen, where the town wants to see it happen. So appreciate that. I know Vice Chair Esposito had a comment she wanted to make.
It's actually a question. I think that this is a, you know, very good example of reimagining an area and then rebuilding an area to meet more current societal needs. But along with that, can you speak to any or the green methodologies for stormwater runoff that would be utilized in the rebuilding of this area?
Well, as, as I said, we spent a lot of time on...
And I may have missed it, and I, because I came in a little late, as was pointed out, if I did, I'm sorry, but I, I would like to know. Thank you.
We are, have sought very hard to reduce roads, to reduce the amount of stormwater that would come. Buildings themselves will have green components to them. So at every point in the process, we were looking to get a small ecological footprint that we're dealing with. And because you're working on 50 acres, it becomes a little bit easier to deal with to that extent. And I can't, you know, we haven't engineered all the components of the stormwater, but we're always looking in terms of general guidelines and how we shrink things and make things a little bit more adaptable to an alternate system. The other thing too, which I might want to add, is that as I've come to you over the last five years, you will notice that many of the sites, like Wincor, ABR, is going to be developing sites. And I believe that this is type of area that, that density and its relationship to how we handle the stormwater and those components are much more appropriate in their use.
Thank you. Anything else?
So are you using green methodology for stormwater?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
I think it's particularly important here, we'll get into that maybe during our deliberations, but thank you for the presentation, Commissioner, very much appreciate that. Appreciate your time. Oh, yeah, kind of, sorry. Didn't see it on the shirt.
I have two questions. The first one, I really appreciate the street scape that you've, and the detail that you've put into that, but I didn't see any playgrounds or parklands. So are those incorporated in the design and/or do you have like a alternative transportation link to something just outside it?
We have, I suppose we might call them vest pocket park components. But again, we really didn't see that there was a great need for large open space components. This was to be an area that was going to be more compact. As to gymnasiums or any other components in relationship to the airport, I believe you're asking that, if there's other alternate means that those are being planned.
The other question was, when we were working on the comp plan, there was a lot of conversation about how Ronkonkoma Hub could be sort of changed so that there was a more direct link between the train and the airport. So I'm wondering if there's a need for any space as part of your component that would allow for that infrastructure to be put in place in case that comes up?
Well, you know, unfortunately, the airport's on the wrong side of, it should have been up on our side. But I know at one point, Supervisor Crozier at that time was talking about a connection with some type, I don't know if it was a monorail or some type of device like that. We have had a lot of outreach to the Islip community, both the developers and ourselves. Actually, we've gone through, I think, three supervisors and three planning commissioners there, one of whom works for me now. So it was always trying to keep Islip involved because we recognized the connection to the airport was going to be a critical connection.
And I would point out that, you know, earlier, when it was talked about where the sewer treatment plant was going to be, there was some conversation and cooperation between Islip and Brookhaven on how that can be best done to maximize, you know, the property. So I think there's much really good communication and coordination between those two towns, which, which is great. The, as Tulio said, obviously, McCarthy was in Islip, and the connection would have to be from the train station, which is right on the border, you know, down on the Islip side. So, and, and of course, there's a little bit of a lack of, you know, leadership right there now. But this, you're saying, Tulio, from your perspective, does not preclude, you know, anything from that, from that side that you're seeing in terms of a need for space to create that?
Well, as a matter of fact, there is extra capacity in SGP that's planned for any redevelopment that Islip might want to have.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate, appreciate the presentation and the time. I'm going to move back to the chair report. First of all, I apologize to the commission and the public for being late. Adrian and I were asked by the county executive to speak in an announcement before, just before this commission meeting started, which is certainly an exciting announcement for Suffolk County's future regarding the resolution of outstanding litigation and alternative uses of, I would say, better uses of money that is sitting in pots unused. And now with the county executive's proposal, what we use towards wastewater treatment and ways to better protect water quality. So I'm going to ask Vice Chair Esposito to just brief the commission just for a moment or two on what was just announced. The next steps, why I just be clear, are this proposal was made, the legislature is going to hear it in the next couple of weeks, and if it goes to the legislature, it would go to the ballot for the citizens of Suffolk County to vote on in November. But Adrian, maybe you could just take a minute or two, just to brief the commission on what we just announced today.
What was announced today was the settlement of a, many months, almost a year actually, of negotiations between environmental groups that actually had two lawsuits against the county. One was for the previous county executive, the Levy administration, who had taken or borrowed, whatever the term is, money from the quarter cent sales tax program and used it for a general operating account. And then there was a borrowing of money from the general operating, from, sorry, from the portion of that quarter cent sales tax by this current administration as well. The quarter cent sales tax, I just want everybody to know, is divided into different segments. One segment is a sewer tax stabilization fund. It is, and then another one is land preservation, and then another one is water quality. So there are different segments. What the negotiation reached, the, the resolution reached just two days ago was that the money from the Levy administration would be paid back, it would be used for land preservation purposes. So it was taken out of the sewer stabilization fund, but it will go into a land preservation fund, which we believe is very good news. Also, the any future borrowing would have to be voted on by the public, which I think is a very good thing too, because the big concern is that the public wants, has already voted on this, and we need to implement the program as the referendums in the past have stated. So there'll be more money now for land preservation as a result of the negotiation. There's going to be a new part of the county charter, which will be more definitive on, on a vote that would be necessary to deviate from the original ballot referendum. But also, in that sewer tax stabilization fund, it allows for more flexibility if the money is sitting there to be borrowed by the county, but then put back in as the over sent interest. So it can help taxpayers more and be used for more purposes. So that's a recent condensed version, it's actually a lot more complicated than that, but the basic line is, without any rate increase, there will be a more efficient use of the funds for land preservation, for water quality improvement, and for sewer infrastructure repairs to existing infrastructures that are antiquated and failing. So those are the three things that the funding now will be used for, which is not any different really than what it was originally, except for the sewer infrastructure portion.
I don't even know if that was clear, but...
Thank you. Thank you. It is, as someone at the press conference said, they said, you know, you need to be able to figure out how to explain all this to the public for a referendum in November. That's clearly a challenge. I think Adrian, you laid it out pretty well, but there are a number of pieces of this. It resolves a number of issues the county has from a financial perspective, as well as the lawsuits and potential referendums that, you know, might, might not have been something that at the end of the day was, was the way to go. And so this is sort of the alternative, it'll go before the legislature and then, and then on presumably to the public in November. So anyway, again, apologize for being late. Want to thank our second vice chair, Mike Kelly, for handling the meeting at the beginning. Appreciate that. As you know, we do have a very busy agenda today with three important applications and we proposed a resolution to tell the MTA that Suffolk County would receive a major boost from the creation of the third track of Long Island Railroad. I want to first though, recognize two former commission members who recently stepped down and are with us today. First one to recognize, Ed Schillingberg. Ed, thank you so much for your service on the planning commission. Please join me in giving a hand, Ed. Ed served with us for, for a bit over a year and as you all know, had the, the thankless task of joining us from Shelter Island, which included, we often complained about traffic, but Ed had to wait in line for a ferry both coming to and from each of our meetings. So Ed, very much appreciate all that you did as a member of the planning commission and we'll certainly miss you. And we have a specific appreciation I'd like to give to you if you'd come up, please. Bring it out. David, is that why the extra plan, the whole section on ferry improvements? Come around, Ed, come around.
No, no bridges to Shelter Island.
That's number 109.
You have to constantly log in. Thank you so much.
Get in the picture, Ed. Here we go.
You're the main person.
You're in the middle, actually.
You don't have to run this.
Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Beautiful. Thank you.
That's Mike's role.
He runs, we need to take pictures. So Ed, thank you so much for your service to Suffolk County. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Also want to recognize John Whelan who's here. John was, John, I did come up. John was with us for two years from the town of East Hampton. As all of you know, being in the commission is a time consuming job and it's an unpaid job and it's a, in many ways, a thankless job. But John showed exemplary leadership on behalf of the town of East Hampton. And he was certainly was a real leader in helping shape East Hampton through this commission, as well as being involved in a number of our, our projects like geothermal and, and getting the East End Farmers Initiative stop moving, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. But John, why don't we, come please, join us for a second here and we'll, we'll get this framed for you, but.
You got another frame, John.
Trying to save money. No lunch, no frame. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three. Good job, Ed. Everybody, please join me in thanking John for all his effort. John is, was asked by the supervisor of East Hampton, since he showed all the leadership here around this table, to become the chair of the zoning board of appeals in East Hampton. And want to wish him well in his new position, John, so.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Thank you, David.
Thank you, you too.
I think you all. Can I just say one?
Yeah, please.
Do I talk this here? Is that, is that from Ivan?
Yeah, you're good.
Great, great. I just, just real quickly, I just wanted to thank all of you. It's been an absolute pleasure to get to know you and to work with you and to all of the planning staff and all the work they've done and Sarah especially. And it's been extra special getting to work with David specifically and Michael on some of the other, the other work we did. And I am enjoying working at the ZBA and it's, it's meaningful to me as my father was town attorney for about 25 years and I was born 57 years ago and it was 1957. And that is the year that the state attorney general adopted zoning for the first time in the town of East Hampton. And my father had authored that code with the then supervisor and town board. So as I used to attend meetings in high school, it's, it's kind of brings me pride to be, to be chairman of the ZBA and continuing his hopes and aspirations for a town. So, and this certainly was a wonderful experience for me and I look forward to seeing you all on the East End and working with David and Michael on pushing the geothermal on the East End as well. Thanks for everything.
Thank you, John. Good. I think you, I believe all the commission members had a chance to meet our new council, Mary Porter. Mary, welcome. Look forward to working with you. Thank you for, for being here. And we have a, a couple of quick items on that. Cut this short because we do have a long meeting ahead of us. With regard to some of the work the commission's doing, in particular on agriculture, as a result of the breakfast roundtable discussion that the planning commission put together two months ago that John helped organize with Congressman Bishop and East Hampton Town Supervisor Larry Cantwell, we have two new initiatives in the work. One, along with the farm bureau and Long Island, the Conic Land Trust and the county administration, we're working on a, on a new proposal to the state for a new fund that would help new farmers finance their capital equipment they need to get started, like tractors and those kinds of things. We have a 10 day deadline to get that proposal together, so we'll be working that hard over the next week. But that's a direct result of the commission's efforts and interest in trying to boost farming on the East End. The second thing, as a result of those efforts, the county executive's office has launched a, a bunch of meetings to help improve education opportunities for people interested in agriculture and trying to get young people particularly interested in preparing to farm. Commissioner Carl Girkelson has attended those meetings on behalf of the county planning commission and Carl, if you can give us just a quick update to the commission about those meetings.
Okay, yeah, we had actually a couple of meetings. One was with the school superintendent on the East End of Long Island, actually from Suffolk County. And then the following, we followed up with the local colleges. As you all know, the age of farmers, now we're 55 years old, growing older, getting more gray hair and we don't have anybody to replace us. So working on a young farmers initiative with these meetings and, which is actually very exciting because the local school districts and the one meeting were very, very interested in putting agriculture into their schools, getting all the children involved. Matter of fact, we, I followed up with meetings with superintendents of Y and D, and they're actually going to build a greenhouse and start growing vegetables. So we're going to work with them to get them up and going and they kind of want to be like a role model for other school districts. Also, we met with the colleges and they want to actually, there's actually such a shortage of courses in agriculture and, you know, most of them, they go upstate or whatever, they get it. So a lot of universities and the colleges were very interested in doing some coursework, offering students with that. But the main thing is we, we all got together, farm bureau, Cornell, local farmers, and it's got to be a big joint effort with everybody involved in order for this to work, you know? So we made some good, good headway. And I'm actually, I've got to meet with Peggy Stagg from East End Boses, Suffolk County Boses, and we're going to work with them, offer them the use of our greenhouses. And she said in turn, she'll bring her students there to do some coursework there, you know? So, but the one thing, I think Boses is the key for the young people because going, even going up to the college level, you know, they, they need that coursework from there and they were very open. So I think, I think we made some headway there. That being said, real fast, we just came out with the, came out with the USDA 2012 census for Suffolk County. And unfortunately, 50, 50% of the farmers that participated in the survey actually lost money that year, over $100,000. So that's not a good thing. So we definitely, we have some major, major problems and, you know, we're certainly going to have to change the way we think, you know, about farming on the East End to keep it viable, you know? But we certainly made some headway.
Great. Thank you, Carl. I know the, the county executive mentioned to me at the beginning as we were leaving the press conference, he was very excited about the education efforts and felt that was really critical, combined with the capital that we can, funding sources to help new farmers even just afford that first tractor and those kinds of things. So, so thank you for the work on that and we'll ask you to keep us up to date and how we as a commission can be more helpful, you know, going forward. With regard to housing, as we discussed before, there's a lack of good housing data in Suffolk County, how many units are being created, how many are workforce, how many are rental, et cetera. We've talked about a plan for the county planning commission to start collecting that data on an annual basis and to better establish regional housing strategies and goals. We're going to need the help of the towns. I've talked to supervisor Thronholt, so have the supervisors association, they very much support this effort and are willing to be helpful. I'll probably be meeting supervisors about it in the next few weeks. But we'll need your help, commission members help, help gather that data from the towns. And I hope to have a plan to by our July meetings, I don't know, four weeks of what exactly we're looking to, to, to be able to, to, what information we're looking to collect. On the Suffolk County Economic Development Conference, as you know, it's a joint effort between us, this planning commission and the Suffolk IDA. County is very supportive of the, of the concept. I spoke with Anthony Manetta, who's now the former IDA executive director and he and I were working on this along with Barbara Roberts from our commission. We've identified some new staff resources. Now that he's left the IDA, we can just sort of gear up again on, on that conference. I think it's going to have to be September. I don't think we can realistically get it done over the summer and summer's just not a good time to do those kinds of conferences. So we're looking at probably going into September. I hope to have an update for you with some more details in July, likely at least lock down a date for the economic development conference for the county. As, as John mentioned, and as I mentioned earlier, the geothermal code, we've circulated that to some of the key stakeholders, got comments back from some of the towns. We're still waiting for the modified version of that back from the industry experts. Then it'll be brought to this commission for our consideration and then sending out to the towns as the, as the model code. I should, I think Tulio may have left, but I just want to acknowledge he was the chief architect of the proccate version of the geothermal code, which is the basis now for the county model code. So just want to recognize him for his work on that. And of course, John Whelan and Mike Kaufman, as was mentioned earlier. One of the primary responsibilities of the county planning commission under the county charter, of course, is the county comprehensive plan. As you all know, that hasn't been accomplished in 40 years. So we have got this rolling now and thanks to Sarah's magic, we've got an extension on the work of AKRF, I think through the end of September now, to help us finish the comprehensive strategic plan for Suffolk County. So we have a few more months, as was discussed, when AKRF is done, they'll, they'll be able to implement or include the water quality plan, which we have coming out in the summer, with the farm plan, we hope to come out in the summer, all that'll be wrapped in. And then what we'll do as the commission and as the department is kind of do an overlay for, for the comprehensive plan for the county, as kind of create that strategy for the county going forward to knit those findings together. I know a lot of you were here earlier and we have identified up on the wall about 100 recommendations. We asked the commission members, if you haven't had a chance, you have red stickers or different colored stickers at your, at your place, to go through the list. I know this was all emailed to you previously, but go through the list, help us identify, help prioritize which of the many goals that we can have as a county, perhaps we should prioritize as, as one of the top ones. Next meeting of this commission is July 2nd in Hop Dog at the legislature. So please mark the calendars. Also want to just remind you about two events that we are co-sponsoring on June, both of them actually on June 16th. One, the Quiet Communities and Outdoor Maintenance with Dennison Building from 8:00 AM to 10:30 AM. And that's focused on reducing nitrogen from lawn fertilization, as well as helping keep quiet, neighborhood's quiet from landscaping. Sarah has helped put that together. I know Neil Lewis from the Sustainability Institute will be speaking as well and a few others. The other thing we have later that afternoon, starting at 1 o'clock, in Northport Library's Green Infrastructure Conference. CCE is the primary organizer of that event. And that's the focus, particularly for town officials and developers about what kinds of green methodologies are working for stormwater and other kinds of runoff. As you all know, we have, this commission put together the green infrastructure, stormwater runoff guidelines for, for green methodologies for that. And we'll, I'll actually be presenting that at the conference. And although there's a lot of, we, that was a couple of years ago now, three years ago or so now that we put that out. So we'll be looking for some new fresh ideas that we can include down again and update that guidance document for the towns and developers. So that's, that's a brief update of all the activities the commission is going on. It's going to be over a bunch of stuff and I'll maybe hit those in July. So any questions? All right. Seeing now, as I mentioned, we have, the third track is, is something that is critical, I believe, for, for Suffolk County's future. The Rousch Foundation has been a real leader in, in identifying the economic opportunities that would come from the third track. And Dave Capell from the Rousch Foundation is here today and I wanted to ask him to come up and give a presentation on what, on the third track and what their analysis is about the impact that will have on Suffolk County and Suffolk County's future. So Dave, thank you very much for being here.
What would you like us to do?
If you'd like us to speak to the podium, that's fine. Whatever makes sense.
Then, no.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Lambsdale, members of the commission. We appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today about third track, which the Rousch Foundation feels is one of the most important triggers for the Long Island economy looking into the future. My name is, as Commissioner Cologne mentioned, is Dave Capell. I'm a consultant on retainer to the Rousch Foundation. Just by way of introduction, in January of 2013, the foundation issued, the Long Island Index issued a report entitled How Long Island Railroad Could Shape the Long Island Economy. And the report focused on three major capital initiatives of the railroad. East Side Access, I'm sure you're all familiar with these. East Side Access, which will bring Long Island Railroad trains into Grand Central for the first time. Second Track, which is a Suffolk County project. And lastly, Third Track. East Side Access and Second Track are both in, in development now. As you know, East Side Access is projected to open sometime around 2020, 2021. And Second Track is in the early stages of development. Third Track, on the other hand, suffered a setback in its first outing as part of the MTA capital plan in, for the period 2010 through 2014, as a result of local community opposition to the takings, minimal, actually what are really minimal property takings that are required for its construction and also various issues related to traffic and noise associated with additional trains. The, following the release of the 2013 index report, the foundation has been focused on Third Track in an effort to educate the public on the incredible importance that we feel this holds for the island, in an, in the hope that we would be able to convince the MTA to include it in the now pending 2015 to 2019 capital plan, which is in formulation and will be adopted sometime in November. To do this, we formed a task force that consists of 28 members of Long Island Business and Education. And this task force has met regularly over the last 18 months to devise strategy. We've met with public officials, we've met with people at the MTA, elected officials in an effort to resuscitate this incredible, incredibly important project. We're here today to share with you an economic impact study that the index commissioned by HRNA Advisors, the influential planning firm in New York, that shows incredible benefits, which we're going to detail for you shortly. I want to say that the, the study is an island wide study, so the, the figures you're going to see are not broken out for Suffolk County, but they don't break out between Suffolk County and Nassau County. But really, I think that Suffolk County stands to be the principal beneficiary of Third Track if it's constructed. And the reason for this is simple, is that the, the biggest opportunity for development on Long Island exists in Suffolk County as opposed to Nassau, which is virtually 100% developed. In addition, Third Track would unlock the full benefits of the Second Track project. And it would also facilitate the TOD efforts that are already underway, one of which was discussed at length here today, Ron Concomahou, also the Y and D Rising Project, and the, the thinking about a TOD project at Republic Air Base. At this point, I'd like to introduce Danielle Hunt, who's my, who's the communications coordinator at the Rousch Foundation. We're going to kind of do a tag team on a presentation for you and Danielle's going to kick it off.
Thank you. Next slide. As Dave already mentioned, this report was compiled by HRNA and also Parsons Frickerhoff, which is a global planning and engineering firm focused on transportation forecasting nationally and also in the New York metro region. Just a little bit of background, infrastructure, particularly transportation, has played a critical role in the growth and expansion of the Long Island economy. The Long Island Railroad. The Long Island Railroad has been a key player in linking Long Island to New York City and the rest of the New York metro region. Long Island boomed during much of the 20th century, as investments in transportation infrastructure enabled Long Island to keep pace with economic growth across the country. The decades between 1950 and 1980 represented the apex of Long Island's economic ascent, and it added over 1.6 million new residents during that time. Yet in the subsequent 30 years, Long Island has grown at a slower rate than the rest of the New York metro region. There are a number of reasons for this underperformance, most of which I'm sure you are all aware of. Structural changes in the local economy, including the loss of high-paying defense industry jobs, land use policies that are strict housing choices, a decline in the supply of young workers, and last but certainly not least, constraints in Long Island's transportation network. All of these factors have interacted and reinforced each other to lead to the current economic conditions. Today, the Long Island Railroad continues to be a critical link for Long Island residents and workers, facilitating travel to the country's largest business hub. I have a lot of friends who commute on the Long Island Railroad, and I read about their griping a lot on social media, but there is no denying that when you really think about what the Long Island Railroad does for this region, it's very impressive and very critical. One-third of Long Islanders that work in New York City commute daily on the Long Island Railroad, and it would require 10 new highway lanes to carry them to Penn Station every day. Building the Third Track could do so much more. It would create additional capacity on the congested Main Line, which several branches feed into. This capacity would allow the Long Island Railroad to run more trains, particularly in the reverse commute direction, and would also improve reliability for existing riders. Currently, the lack of frequency to most Long Island Railroad stations on the Main Line renders reverse commuting infeasible. There's simply not enough flexibility in the schedule to allow New York City residents to reverse commute to and from most destinations on Long Island. So as you can see, current times for Hicksville and Midiola, it's 22 and 20 minutes respectively, and with Third Track built, that would drop to 9 and 11 minutes. Every morning during rush hour, there is a
Go back there.
Yep.
Ted, you go back there?
Yep.
Just want to see this.
Sure.
Yeah. The Huntington Ronkonkoma.
Pretty impressive.
Yeah.
Every morning during rush hour, next slide, there is a 90-minute blackout period where there are no eastbound trains, as the capacity of the railroad is filled with trains traveling west. So what does that mean for a potential reverse commuter? Well, if they needed to get to work during those 90 minutes, they would have to drive, and for many living in New York City that don't have a car, that is simply not an option. Hicksville is the busiest station east of Jamaica, but you cannot get there from points west between 6:48 and 8:26 AM during the week, which is highlighted by that red circle. Next slide. By increasing regional mobility, Third Track would revitalize Long Island's job market by attracting high-quality professional service and tech jobs, stemming the outflow of young workers, generate new tax revenues, and encourage the provision of new TOD housing that contributes to the revitalization of Long Island station areas. The ongoing economic benefits of improved train service due to Third Track drives four main benefits. The first, with a more frequent and reliable ride, Third Track makes commuting to Long Island an option for many New York City residents, effectively expanding the workforce available to Long Island firms. The second, it enables existing riders to save time. Three, it promotes spending on Long Island by visitors who take advantage of the enhanced service. And finally, all of these benefits are amplified, one more. All of these benefits are amplified by transit-oriented development policies that promote development in station areas, which facilitates further economic growth by placing more residents and workers precisely where they can benefit from increased service.
What are the four station areas in Suffolk County that you guys looked at?
I'm sorry?
Oh, it said there, four station areas in Suffolk County. On the slide, it says four station
On the slide, on the bottom, that's bottom verbiage?
It talks about six Nassau County stations and four Suffolk County stations. That's what you used for your analysis, we're wondering which ones you used in your analysis.
I assume that it's Ronkonkoma, Wyandanch, probably Babylon, and I'm not getting, I'm not sure about the four. We can get back to that.
It's not oriented.
It's not Greenport, right?
No.
Okay, so ready, throw, good.
No, that's okay, I'm just writing it down so you remember. All right, so to illustrate all of this, I'm just going to ask you guys to bear with me and take a little journey into the future, where we have Third Track and TOD. Next slide. This is Christian. Christian is a 24-year-old hipster with a computer science degree who's currently living in Brooklyn. He was looking for jobs, and he came upon an opportunity at a new company in Hicksville that really matched his skill set and had a great salary. But being a 24-year-old hipster, he has no desire to live on Long Island, and he probably couldn't find an apartment anyway because of the lack of rentals. But thanks to the Third Track, he can now take the train from Atlantic Terminal to Hicksville pretty easily, and since Hicksville invested in TOD, he can walk right to the office from the train station and even grab breakfast on the way. The new company is thrilled to have a larger pool of workforce to pull from, and they have vowed to stay in Hicksville forever and ever. Next slide. This is a 30-something couple expecting their first child, and they're moving back to Long Island to be close to their families. John works in the city, and he needs good reliable train service to get there every day, and even though his wife Emily works as well, due to the high housing costs on Long Island, they can only afford one car. So it's best that they can live within walking distance of the train station. So they decide to buy a new townhouse in the Ronkonkoma Hub. Thanks to Third Track, their reverse commute, their commute on the Ronkonkoma line has much fewer service disruptions, and there are more trains, which is great for John, and thanks to TOD, he can walk to the train every day while Emily takes her car to work and hop up. Even better, thanks to TOD, John can pick up the dry cleaning and stop at the market on the way home from the train, which is every woman's dream. And I'm now going to turn it over to Dave to talk some numbers if you get it.
Thank you.
So you might ask, where's the beef? Next slide, please. 14,000 jobs would be created by Third Track. $5.6 billion in gross regional product by 2035, 10 years after Third Track completion, and $3 billion increase in personal income at the same point in time. 35,400 new residents by 2035.
Is the expectation, Mayor, that they would be in, built around the, in the TOD areas?
That's the
Of course, our issue, of course, is having those people, you know, heading the traffic is not
I think it's a combination of the two. I think there's a certain assumption about TOD, and there's also an assumption about an accrual to the larger geography. This slide shows what I think is perhaps the most important feature, which is that Third Track will encourage and encourage the retention and an increase in the population of young people. I mean, I, Christian could be my son. My son Joshua lives in Brooklyn, he actually at one point considered a job in Hicksville and ruled it out for very reasons that Danielle showed on one of those earlier slides. We need those people to make a future for the county, and Third Track will ensure that. In summary, and this is important because it shows the difference, you know, the question of TOD and the local commitment to zoning policies that facilitate TOD is absolutely essential to our assumptions about this project. The benefits literally are cut in half if TOD is not introduced. With TOD, 14,000 new jobs, $5.6 billion in increased gross regional product, $3 billion in increased personal income, and 35,400 new residents. Without TOD, as you can see on the slide, those figures are cut in half. Lastly, it'll have huge benefits for the governments of Long Island, $40 million in increased sales tax revenue by 2035, and $103 million in new tax revenues, property tax revenues. TOD is a home run for Long Island. These benefits are, can't be matched literally by any other initiative that we're familiar with, and we encourage and urge this commission to take a position of support. We need that support in order to influence the MTA to include this important project along the pending Capital Plan development. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Capel, appreciate it. Questions for, for, there's others? Danielle? Seeing none. Thank you for your time, I guess it's cool, I guess we, I was free to interject during it, so I followed that trail a couple of times. But I guess it'd be interesting to get your perspective, Dave, obviously Nassau County is, there's some issues there, the land use, et cetera, that's not our, thankfully, our concern, but our concern is sort of how this impacts Suffolk County, and I wonder if you could speak for a moment about sort of, as an East Ender yourself, sort of what benefits you see even for the East End of Suffolk County from Third Track?
Well, I think, I think the East End will benefit to the extent that modernized transit becomes closer to us. I mean, this is not going to have a direct impact on the North Fork, which is where I live, because our train service is so infrequent that it's virtually useless for regular purposes.
We won't quote you on that.
No, I mean, it's
Probably can.
Well, they practically cut it out. They talked about eliminating service to Greenport only a couple of years ago, when the railroad was coming back.
Right.
But I, for example, drive to Ronkonkoma fairly regularly to take the train into New York as an alternative to driving in or using the bus service. To the extent that Third Track facilitates that process, that's good for folks like me, and also hopefully eventually, as this process moves east, the railroad will see the advantages to increasing service to places like Riverhead and maybe even out to Greenport in the long run, and that would expand our opportunities. Just to talk for one second, mobility, in my view, in the large context, is probably the most important ingredient in regional success. People have to be able to get around, you know, I saw some interesting, I saw an interesting statistic a couple of weeks ago, that shows that it's actually cheaper to live in New York, even with the astronomical rents that people pay in the city, because they don't have to fund the cost of cars, and they don't have to pay for a trans, for a commutation ticket on the railroad. It's cheaper to live in the city. That's a real problem for Long Island. Until it's addressed, we're going to continue to see the kind of stagnation and decline that unfortunately we're witnessing now over the last few years.
Commissioner Casey and Commissioner Fenn.
Just a quick question, I don't know if you guys did any research, but with the Third Rail, would there be any ability to have any trains that are faster? Because I know that's one of the issues, it seems like it takes a while to get back and forth, especially with all the stops, so maybe with a Third Rail, like a Central Express, or, did you, doing the research, see any types of technology for faster types of trains to go into the city from downtown?
We did not look at modernized trains themselves, no, no. This is more about frequency and mostly about reverse commuting. We really feel that reverse commuting is absolutely essential to economic viability for the island. People have to be able to get out this way.
And just to be clear, it's the capacity, by having the Third Track, is from a logistic perspective, allows trains, instead of having running two trains in at those key times, you could run one out, so that's the
That's exactly right.
Very basic logistics perspective.
I mean, just to put it in perspective, the two tracks that we're talking about adding a third to, I mean, this is a 10-mile-long stretch, right? Those two tracks were constructed in 1844, when the railroad was first built. The population of Long Island was 50,000. That was the, that was the design at the time. We're still living with that constraint, 170 years later, same two tracks. It just defies common sense to think that the region can grow with that sort of capacity constraint.
Great. Commissioner Fenn.
Thanks for coming in for presentation, very insightful. I have two questions. First is, what is the cost estimate for this Third Track?
Third Track is roughly $1 billion in construction cost.
Okay, so it's a billion dollars, so part of this budget upcoming for the MTA for 2015 would include this, this, this inner market, we would, for a billion dollars. You mentioned the benefit of the upside of this Third Track. This is one of the things that we see from a region that we were not successful at, because we had Commissioner Bottulio just in, and we're going to hear from the director of planning for the town of Smithtown, what they're doing things on their own motion. In order for these plans to come to fruition, you invest a billion dollars on this Third Track, but you prove by some of your slides, you don't get the economic benefit until these TODs come to realization. Has there been any discussions with any of these municipalities for them to buy in, to maybe encourage the MTA to lay down this billion-dollar investment, to ensure that there's going to be some sort of certainty that it'll come to fruition with some zoning overlays of these TODs, which Tulio's been working on his TOD for five years, and we see that TOD sometimes is a euphemism, because it's a great idea and concept, but it's very difficult to
First of all, just by way of clarification, there's still major benefits to Third Track without TOD. I think it's maybe the previous slide shows what the, what the impact of TOD is. It doubles the benefit, but there's still a huge benefit to the project with, without TOD. So it should be undertaken with or without. But again, if I could just point back to, the guys that figured out that they should put those two tracks in in 1844, created the opportunity that we're now eating, if you will, on Long Island, and it's that type of foresight that's needed in order to set the stage for the type of development that we're talking about. Without this, the TOD won't occur, because there's no point to it. You know, if you can't, if you don't have the mobility that's intrinsic in the concept of TOD, you're not going to get it. So, you know, it's kind of the chicken and the egg, and we would submit that we, you got to take a chance. I mean, this is, this is about investing in the long term, really long term, you know, hopefully not 170 years.
Yeah, and I would point out that you're not taking a big leap of faith here. I mean, increasing economic capacity will play out in a number of ways, and, you know, the income statement that, that's up there, you said, third without TOD, it's 1.6 billion, well, that's an annual income, you know, number, so that's not just like a one-time thing, that's an annual increase in income.
Every year.
Now, I mean, you could cut that in half, or cut that in two-thirds, and you'd say, you know, it's still worth, it still pays itself out very quickly over time. I think that's, that's clear. The other thing is that, from a taxpayer perspective, that billion dollars is being spent either way. It's coming out of our pockets, it's just a question whether it goes into the city or comes and is put to use here on Long Island. So, you know, it's not like it's a, you know, pay zero or pay a billion, you're paying a billion dollars, it's just a question of whether we finally get some of that MTA money. Second Avenue subway's very nice, East Side Access has obviously some benefit for Long Island for sure. This is the way it actually really benefits Long Island with MTA dollars.
To unlock our potential. If I can just before, before moving on.
Sure.
We didn't, you know, we didn't come, this project wasn't conceived in a vacuum. I mean, you can look at the Silicon Valley in California, where young people are living in San Francisco and commuting to work at Google, and for a closer example, just look at Metro North. Metro North built a Third Track in the last 10 years, and that Third Track has fueled the redevelopment and the expansion of economic activity in Stanford, the White Plains is in enormous success. None of that would happen without the, without the transit mobility that they provided with the Third Track project on Metro North.
No, that's definitely agreed. What we see from the MTA, from a Long Island perspective, unless you're north of Tappan City Bridge or, or west of the Midtown Tunnel, those dollars are not coming in this direction. So it's, regardless of, to David's point of the TOD, this obviously, investment in our transportation infrastructure is, you know, we always talk about the Rousch Foundation, the clock is ticking, definitely is ticking.
All right, sorry, good.
I would submit that TOD will follow as a matter of common sense if this track is [inaudible].
Well, in some ways, if a highway's built in the middle of nowhere, soon you have, you know, sort of people take advantage of that opportunity, obviously here it's not nowhere, but just to use that analogy. The other thing I would say is, you know, I was at, I was on a work trip to Tokyo about a month ago, and, you know, you see the money that's being put to play in other countries for transportation systems is tremendous, and obviously that hasn't really followed suit here, particularly on the East Coast. Commissioner Kaufman, and then let's, let's wrap up.
Okay. Thank you for bringing up the Silicon Valley example. I was going to say, is there, or are there proven models that you can cite to, to show that these economic benefits might occur and have the benefits from this Third, Third Track might occur? I'm looking at Boston, where you have reverse commutes out to the 128 corridor and to the center of city. Philadelphia to a much lesser degree. As Dave was just talking about Tokyo, you look at, for example, a lot of the Chinese cities, which I cannot pronounce unfortunately.
Nor do we want to.
No, please, George.
Chitao.
And suburban New Jersey also.
And, well, that's a beer. Unless you want me to start talking Japanese, okay? But those are the kinds of examples that I think would be very, very essential to try and use to sell this kind of a project here on Long Island, that's the critical thing. We lost, if you will, the Third Rail Initiative, or the Third Track Initiative a couple of years ago, because I don't think the selling job was done.
I agree.
If you can show these kinds of examples from other countries and other areas of the city, I think that's a, you know, that's maybe a way to go.
I encourage you to, to visit the Long Island Index web I encourage you to, to visit the Long Island Index website, where, where you can find the 2013 index report on, on this project. And those, those examples are cited at length.
Thank you. Commissioner Gerst, we're really moving on.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a comment in reference to what Mike just said. You preach into the choir here. Completely agree. Why does the railroad have to sell railroad utilities? They have certain innate federal rights in terms of expansion and doing things. Why, why do we have to take the aspect of possibly getting it derailed by selling something that the railroad we know is needed, when the railroad has those rights?
Well, the, the process in New York State with respect to the MTA capital plan is that it's formulated initially by the, by the divisions within the MTA, the Long Island Railroad, New York City Transit, and Metro North. They each come up with their own projected needs. What they do, what they call a 20-year lease assessment. That's then presented to the MTA. The MTA crafts the budget, and then the MTA Board acts on it. That then becomes the subject of a ratification requirement by a group called the MTA Capital Review Board, which is comprised of three members. One is the Commissioner of Transportation of the State of New York, who's an appointee of the governor, so she speaks for the governor. And then there's, there's a member from the New York State Senate, and a member from the New York State Assembly. The vote has to be unanimous, and that's where it gets complicated. Because as you know, the, you know, the politics of Long Island are such that the Senate delegation tends to operate together. And that if there's a disequilibrium, if you will, in one of the districts, it can have an impact on this kind of a vote.
Thank you.
All right. We appreciate the presentation, and understand that your desire for this commission to weigh in on the MTA, we have a resolution which we will tackle in, in a few minutes. But I wanted to thank all of you, and then also recognize now Director of Planning for the Town of Smithtown, Frank Derubias. Frank, thank you for your patience, of course, and Frank, of course-
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it. Well, let's give the Ralph P. folks a round of applause. Thank you for your advocacy on behalf of Long Island. If you guys weren't out there, no one would be. So thank you.
Thank you.
Director Derubias has been before the commission a number of times, presenting on various projects. This one is the Hop Dog Industrial Park. Frank.
Thank you very much. Before the meeting, I was talking to Mike Kaufman, and asked him how long does he want me to be, and he said, be brilliant and brief. As far as being brilliant, I'll leave that up to you, but in terms of syntax, you never put planner and brief in the same sentence. However, I'll see what I can do to-
The length of our meeting has testified to that, so you don't have to worry about it. Go ahead.
Okay. Basically, what I'm gonna-
And I apologize, sort of, you all have the maps of the Hop Dog Industrial Park in front of you. Just Frank, you know, we all have what you have in slide in front of us.
Okay, that's good. And on the back, by the way, there is a crib sheet. This is actually given out to the public, and it was given out to the notices that we mailed to all the surrounding residential communities. Basically, my presentation today, I'm going to tell you about what is an overlay district and why we basically use them. An overlay district in a simplest form is another district that sits on top of the zoning, and allows you to make either more restrictive or less restrictive regulations that apply within that particular area. We use overlay districts to fine-tune zoning ordinances. Now, most of you may be aware that in two years, zoning is going to be 100 years old. The first zoning ordinance was established in New York City in 1960, and we've had a lot of experience with it. One of the things that we've learned with regard to zoning is that zoning is very good in terms of defining uses on a town-wide basis, or on a city-wide basis, if you're so inclined. What it is not good at is really fine-tuning a locale. And we've known this for several years. This is not something that is, something that we recently have learned. And over the years, the state of New York and other communities throughout the nation have made changes with regard to zoning, so as to allow us to try and focus in more on what happens within a site, or what happens within a community. Some of the obvious things that we've done in New York has been the implementation of site plan regulations, which occurred in the 1960s, the idea of mandated clusters, which occurred in the 1970s. Overlay districts, however, answer something that neither of those two answer, which is how you could apply this to a given area or neighborhood. And that's what we're really talking about today. The Town of Smithtown is currently also updating its comprehensive plan, and we've actually been giving it to the Suffolk County Planning our volumes within. We're in, are going to publish our seventh volume. And what we have learned to date in, in terms of Smithtown is a lot of different things. One of the first things that is very important, and I make this emphasis in most of my presentations that I have been doing over the last month, is that a lot of the times when you take a look at the four western towns, and especially the Town of Smithtown, what you're looking at is a developed town. Most of the time, and most of our regulations and most of our ideas are thinking about the post-war years, when we were growing, and we had vacant land. And when somebody would come in and say, I want to build a new office building, we would tell them to go out to whatever Route 111 is and get 10 acres and build. Well, you can't do that anymore. And when you look at the industrial parks, you see that, for example, what we have here is 1,200 acres in which land is entirely built hot. And so when we're looking at what you're going to do within your community in terms of an update to our comprehensive plan, you have to take a look at, looking at developed properties, and what are you going to do now? Because the table has already been set. You know, what you're going to be able to do is change the meal, but you're not going to make that much of a difference in terms of a radical change. So you have, you're given a lot of what you're working with. And one of the things that we found was that our current codes are really not tailor-made to our economic centers. And when we talk about our economic centers, we're not just talking about the industrial park. We're talking about our commercial downtowns, our main retail centers, such as the mall, or Combe Plaza, or Crooked Hill Road. These are the economic engines of the town, and they're very important to us. And what we learned in our comprehensive plan update is that our regulations, in some ways, is actually hurting these particular areas. It's hurting them in a lot of different ways. And one of the reasons being is that zoning is applied on a town-wide basis. Whenever you have to do an amendment, and I'll go through a couple of examples of this, when we get into discussing the Hop Dog Industrial Park, you have to think of the town-wide implications. So something may make sense in our industrial park, but it doesn't make sense in your return pipe. And an idea may be killed because of that particular rationale. Or on the converse, you make an applicant go through a tedious process of variances or other forms of relief that delay the project even more. And what happens is, is that you find out that this actually hurts your economy in the long run. And this is what we've done with, in examining the Hop Dog Industrial Park. I would, before I discuss the exact overlay district, I would like to emphasize, however, that when we discuss the Hop Dog Industrial Park, we're not looking at one entity. We're looking at an entire engine of the town. And that's very complex. And what we have done is not just attack the zoning issues here, but we've also attacked the infrastructure and other needs of this particular area. Case in point, one of the biggest things that we have done, which is with the county's help significantly, is we are now implementing a multimillion-dollar sewer in projects for the entire industrial park. I don't have to go through this, because this commission knows what sewers need for this particular area. But we have now, we have sewer system that covered about a good 40% of the industrial park. It had a limited capacities. We now have a new sewer system that's going to be able to cover the entire park. This is fundamental, if you're going to talk about any forms of change, and I don't need to go through that. One of the other aspects that we did was we implemented a, with the county again, helping out, and we thank you, a half a million dollar traffic study that was done by Nelson &amp; Pope. This is a nine-volume set. It's rather thorough. We could tell you a lot about the-
I should hope so, Frank.
It does make good bedtime reading, too. But in any event, we took a look at the traffic, and based upon that, the county has undertaken on their half, and the town has undertaken on its side, and the state has done its work as well, major traffic improvements based upon that study. One of the big things that, for example, that the county did was the bridge of Motor Parkway, expanding it from two lanes to four lanes. Let's say that Kennedy is also working on getting a new substation built within the industrial parks, and that we have issues with regard to power problems. And we're working also with fiber optics and other forms of communication. All of this is being done for a reason. What we are looking at here is, we are looking at a park, from the town's point of view, that is in economic competition with not only the rest of the island. That's easy. We're in competition with the rest of the nation, and we're in a national competition. We have some of the largest pharmaceutical companies here, one of our biggest forest labs, which just bought out by a foreign concern. We're kind of concerned about that, and what may happen in the future. What we have to do is make this area as competitive as possible, as attractive as possible. And so when we're looking at what we're trying to do to this area, and we're going to talk about the overlay in just a minute, we are looking at a comprehensive attack at all different aspects of this particular park. I'm emphasizing this because sometimes people look just at a zoning issue, and think that it's something off to the side. We're looking at a number of issues in terms of what we're trying to do here. But let's get down to the overlay district and what we're trying to do. Well, when we started this, we took a look at the Hop Dog Industrial Park, and tried to figure out what's going on in there that would need some change. Because we already knew that we were going to start to work with overlay districts, because we already have started with overlay districts in the town. The Nissenbach River Corridor, the LWRP, these are for all intents and purposes overlays. And what we have done now is take a look in a very detailed way in terms of our park as to what their needs are. Now, we also have to be concerned with whatever we have to do, and this is the limiting factor, we have to make sure that we would not trigger an environmental impact statement with regard to this first phase. The reasoning being is that we wanted, this is working in conjunction with a number, a number of other activities. So the changes that we are recommending at this stage are relatively modest. What we do intend is to go even further with the changes at a later time. But those other changes will require more extensive analysis. And we can talk about those in a question and answer period afterwards. But in any event, when we looked at the industrial park, we saw some behavior. And by the way, when we say we looked at the industrial park, we have an inventory of every single building, every single user, every single square footage that we have there. With GIS nowadays, it's not a big to-do. We know exactly what's happening in terms of the industry. The breakdown, for example, of between office manufacturing and wholesale distribution is about 30% in each category. And what we see is that in the distribution side, and this was where the demand was, the new automated warehouses all have standardized on 44-foot, these automated machines that have these robotic loading facilities. Our height requirement, 35 feet, obviously didn't cut it. So if a user was coming by from Texas and wanted to look and see if located in the Town of Smithtown, they would see that they couldn't build a facility in the Town of Smithtown, and they move on to someplace else where they could have done business. Not even stopping to think, well, maybe they could get a variance or whatever. So we were losing that. So one of the things that we were creating the overlay district is that we immediately attacked this problem by saying, in this particular area, excluding the, oops, I have this upside down. Expressway's on the bottom. Sorry, folks. What we did was, we allowed now a new height requirement from 35 feet to 40 feet, uh, to 50 feet in all areas except the yellow area that you see on this map. The yellow area indicates a thousand-foot setback from any residential district. There was an environmental reason why we had to do that. My original recommendation was to include most of those areas. However, since that would have triggered an environmental impact statement, we deleted that particular area. We also allowed for buildings on Motor Parkway to be 62 feet in height as a normal height requirement. That's the blue area that you see before you. This is now a substantial change from what we already have. If you take a look at Tri-Tex buildings at 100 Motor Parkway, the Sherwood Hotel, the Marcus Towers, our three investors, they're all 60 feet or higher. So we're not being inconsistent, but we sent all those people through a, a mortgage process to get all those waivers, to get those heights in that particular area. A second thing that we did was, we allowed for parking garages. This, if you, if you know anything about the Town of Smithtown, we debate these things back and forth. Parking garages and light industry are a necessity. All you have to do is drive on the expressway now from Cannon, that you see going over on 110, to Cop USA, which is on Motor Parkway, the big office buildings, they're going to have parking garages. We are not against parking garages in this particular area. What happened, however, is if we allowed them here, we had to allow them in other locations. And I always was getting into an argument that people were thinking we were building parking garages in St. James. We're not going to. We are never going to. But now, we can say with certainty that we're going to allow parking garages in this particular area.
You'd better not allow it in St. James.
Oh, come on, Mike. You like them.
Like them, Mike.
Well, the next thing was a real, a realistic concession to what is going on in the industrial park. We define light industry as everything that occurs with inside of a building, and no noise or odor activity occurs outside of a building. And one of those things that we exclude is outdoor storage. In today's world, and all you have to do is drive through the industrial park, and you see containers that are left out from shipping and everything else. This is unrealistic, and we recognize that. So now the code allows for a limited amount of outdoor storage. It's 20% of the building area if it's a containerized area, it is 10% of the building area if it is screened from public view. This will allow flexibility for those who receive pallets and other packages to have them stored on that particular site without having to incur the wrath of our public safety department. The last item that we attempted to change, and this is quite logical, is that we currently count lobby space and atriums as part of the office space for the coverage of a particular site and parking. And what this is discouraging is the construction of large, attractive office buildings. Even though we have granted variance in the past for these office buildings, most people assume that it's a negative. And so what we've done is excluded this from the calculations of a building. So if a, a large office user wishes to move in and have a three- or four-story atrium that's in front, it will not count towards the space, and they'll be able to put those design features in. And what that would result in is a, the type of office buildings that we are trying to attract in this particular area. Now, I would just mention that this is not the end process, where you're going to hear more overlays in the next year or so, if we apply it to our downtowns and other areas. And this is not the end story with regard to the Hop Dog Industrial Park, because we do intend to revisit it. But the next time we have to revisit it, we know we have to do an environmental impact statement for the changes that we want to make. But we are going to go forth with this, and you're going to see these type of changes more and more within the Town of Smithtown, and possibly other areas of the county. Because this is the way you're going to have to, we believe, you're going to have to start attacking redevelopment issues and these particular areas, and with these types of approaches. Now, I've cut my presentation about as briefly as possible, but I have a lot of statistics, if you want to go through them, a lot of-
Why don't you see if that makes sense in respect to any questions that are asked? But let me just commend you, as I did earlier, because at the end of the day, you know, here on Long Island, we are competing every minute of every day with every other region around the world. And we need to make sure that we're in a modern, we have modern facilities that compete. And so certainly applaud you, and as was mentioned earlier, township's doing things on their own motion to set, to set a game plan for the future, is exactly what this commission likes to see, because it helps give certainty and direction, allows us to help you help shape sort of Suffolk County's future. So, so thank you for your innovations and the leadership you're bringing to the Town of Smithtown. Now, with that, I'll see if there's any other questions around the table. Commissioner Kaufman, and Commissioner Venn.
Okay. Thank you, Frank, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very familiar with this plan. I think it's a very, very good one. I especially like the buffering that is going on separating the industrial area from the residential areas. I think it's very essential, and it makes this plan basically viable inside the Town of Smithtown. There is one concern, though, that I have, which is about noise. I've been down in that area. I hear the crashing sometimes at night. And I'm not saying that that should be a game killer or anything like that, but the noise problems do exist. And even with the screening requirements that you have in there, I would encourage you to, or ask a question, basically, is there some way to monitor some of these noise complaints and possibly impose more shielding? Anything from berms to war trees, things like that? That would really eliminate a lot of possible public opposition to this and enable this plan to- plan to get through basically at town level. I mean, it most likely has a very good chance here. I think we all see the regional significance of this. This is the second or third largest industrial park, I believe, at least on the island, if not in other areas. It's critical to getting this one through. But you know, there are some rough edges here and there and that's what I would ask you to talk about.
We have looked at this particular issue. First off, we'd mention is that this park is unique. There is a mandate, which we do enforce, 100-foot buffer around the entire park with regard to every residential area. And that is enforced by the town. And it is a planted buffer, it's in the natural state. I'm reluctant to try to do berms and I'll mention why in a minute. But the noise issue is a real issue and what the, most of the time it has to do with loading. And this is a Long Island phenomenon, we have to be aware of this. Most users now are using off-hours for shipping because you obviously cannot ship during peak hours. And what happens is, is that they're doing loading after midnight and noise travels very far with regard to these particular areas. What we are looking at, and we're working with the HIA, is possibly now considering sound walls around certain areas. And similar to what we would have on the expressway, there's a double-edged sword with regard to sound walls, which if you've had some experience with it, it's not the panacea for everything. You know, we've done, the county built a wall, for example, on Motor Parkway and there's different reactions to that. It's not an easy, it's an easy thing to do, but it's not an answer for everybody because once you build a wall, you build a certain barrier towards the sun, towards other things and people then complain about the other things that they lost. However, that's really the long-term solution to the noise issue. The short-term issue is we're trying to work on a case-by-case basis with each of the owners about their shipping and how they're handling their shipping. And some of the things that we're looking into is like, for example, putting in rubber pads in the backs of these buildings where they're putting these containers down because they're going right now directly onto asphalt and they're very loud when they go down and the ground shakes when they drop them in some cases. So maybe if we could get, and some have talked to us about putting pads down. So we're trying to attack it in that particular way. But this is not an easy issue to work with because noise, we've had a lot of experience with this, travels great distances. And you would think that something 500 feet away would not cause a problem, it does. So that's the best answer I can give you right now.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Barry?
I appreciate the sensitivity to the adjacent residential districts, but I wonder what are the future plans for that little sliver it looks like residential between the 62-foot height and the highway?
Well, I would be cavalier to say that's the town of Islip, but the reality is it's a jurisdiction of ours. The, what we're speaking about is this area that's below here. And we've had no, really, it's really the town of Islip that has done that particular area. What Islip appears to be doing, and if there's a representative here from Islip that addresses, they seem to be moving more and more commercial in developing that particular area. Arthur Kuntz, when he was head of the planning department, addressed that particular area and said, the reality is, is that there's outside of buffering, that particular area is very little that you can do. And in the long term, is, his suggestion was to seek at that time to try to get rid of it. Now what we have to do is attempt to at least balance their needs or requirements. I would say however, what they are facing is office users mostly on that side. And on the Motor Parkway side, the town requires a minimum setback of 80 feet for all the buildings. So then we have large laws and large setbacks for that particular area. So it's not like we have the manufacturing yet right up adjacent to that.
Okay. So I believe a number of those buildings wall on Motor Parkway on your side of Motor Parkway are already above the 62 feet.
Oh yes, in fact, at least a third of them are above 62 feet.
All right, any other questions? If not, thank you Director Ruby, appreciate your time and we'll get to that in a few minutes. The next item, Sarah's. All right, why don't we move on to the MTA resolution, then we'll get to the administrative agenda. You have the resolution circulated earlier, you also have it in front of you. The resolution is calling on the MTA, it's for the Planning Commission to call on the MTA to, for a variety of reasons, including the ones that were stated, to put the third track in the capital plan. My understanding is that this would be the first governmental request to do so by this board. The only thing I wanted to add without objection is that there's no whereas, actually I realized that, talk's wrong. The Planning Commission's role here, and so I wanted to add that whereas the Suffolk County Planning Commission is the lead planning and land use agency for Suffolk County responsible for preparing Suffolk's future economic capacity and transportation needs, come on. And then go on to the other whereas, it's talking about the MTA. Any objection adding that?
That's good language.
Thank you, sir. Any objection? Seeing none. Any other discussion about the resolution? We saw the presentation, I don't know if you had your questions answered. Any other discussion? All right. I'll entertain a motion then to adopt the resolution as in front of you with the addition of the whereas that I just read. Motion by Commissioner Kaufman, second by Commissioner Barry. All in favor, please raise your hand. It's 11 to 0. Thank you and thanks again to the Roush Foundation. We will get that in the final form for you and perhaps also get that out to elected officials who continue to put pressure and let them know that Suffolk County is, the Planning Commission is in favor of the third track and that's important. Let's move on to, I just want to see if Sarah wants to give her director's report, but let me, you know, why don't we start with the administrative agenda? And Andy, why don't you take it away? First item is the Hop Dog Industrial Park.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, as indicated, the first regulatory item on the commission's agenda is a referral from the town of Smithtown for the Hop Dog Industrial Park, change the zone from light industrial to light industrial overlay. Jurisdiction for the commission is that the industrial park is situated close, within 500 feet of Long Island Expressway, Grand Building, Motor Parkway, Northern State Parkway, and municipal boundary of the town of Islip. With regard to the proposal details, in order to be brief, you did get the staff report, you did read it, I apologize for the length of the delivery of it. Director Ruby's has given you an overview of that, so in order to be brief, I'll just skip right to the staff analysis, if that's okay? Okay, as stated, the Hop Dog Industrial Park is a large and critically important job center in Suffolk County. The park has a wide road net, a wide road network and does have sufficient capacity for additional traffic. In terms of the analysis, the proposed, the proposed change of zone also addresses many of Suffolk County Planning Commission policies and guidelines regarding county-wide priorities. Certainly economic development goal of the commission to encourage economic development that creates a range of employment opportunities is addressed by this overlay district. The proposal would also address the commission's land use goal of encouraging density in areas with adequate infrastructure. In addition, this proposal promotes the planning commission's goal of promoting development where it is appropriate and discourages development where it is inappropriate. Also, the proposed light industrial district contains a number of important criteria and review processes that will ensure that the expansion is done responsibly. In addition, it is believed of the staff that the proposal is supported by the town of Smithtown's draft unadopted comprehensive plan update and Suffolk County Planning Commission's adopted guidelines. So in a nutshell, staff is recommending approval of the change of zone from light industrial to light industrial overlay with the following comments. The first comment is with respect to pursuant to general municipal law, that all site plan applications that come in under the industrial park be submitted to Suffolk County Planning Commission for review. The second recommendation is that the applicants for site plan, as they come into the light industrial park, begin a dialogue as soon as possible with Department of Health Services and Department of Public Works. Third recommendation is that the applicants for site plan approval, when they come into the light industrial district, be encouraged to review the Suffolk County Planning Commission publication on managing stormwater and natural vegetation through natural vegetation and green methodologies. We believe on a site plan level, there may be some opportunities to address stormwater management through green methodologies. The fourth recommendation is that the applicants for site plan, when they come into the town for the light industrial district overlay, be encouraged to review the commission's guidelines on energy efficiency. Fifth recommendation is that the applicants, when they come in for site plan, be required to, recommended to review the planning commission's guidelines on public safety and incorporate into proposals where practical any kind of design elements that would be best management for the project. And the sixth comment from the staff to recommend to the commission, to recommend to the town is that the applicants for site plan approval in the light industrial district review the planning commission's guidelines related to universal design. So in total, Mr. Chairman, and in a nutshell, staff is recommending approval of the referral for change of zone from light industrial to light industrial overlay. We did have a couple of slides that I neglected to go through and might, perhaps not go through them real quick. That's the aerial of the industrial park, similar to what Director Ruby's put on. Next slide. This is the zoning, in case you have a question in, right in the middle there, there's an out parcel. Next slide. Okay, and the, this we provided to you in our staff report, the ordinance we have up here in case you want to take a look at. That is the staff report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Freeling. This is a Smithtown project and defer to Commissioner Finn to start us off.
Thank you, Commissioner. I want to thank Director Frank Ruby for coming today and making this brief and agile. We haven't seen anything from Smithtown at this commission, but I can tell you that when things do come from Smithtown, they're big. And this is, this is such a huge part of not only the town of Smithtown, Suffolk County and Long Island, it is the largest industrial park in the nation. And what I did learn today was I knew there was a massive expansion of the sewer infrastructure, but going from 40% to 100%, I think is, I think it's just an amazing figure and then will untap, will lead to untapping the economic future development on this, on this parcel. So the, but we've heard extensively the benefits of this from the director, so of, I'm totally 100% in favor of this. We'll open it up to whoever else would like to add to it, but I'd like to make a motion to, at the appropriate time, to adopt the staff report as written.
Thank you, Christian. Other comments, Commissioner Kaufman?
I also come from the town of Smithtown and I am, as stated, familiar with it. I would like to just have one comment inserted if possible with your support around the table. Regarding the outdoor stores, the town should be encouraged to monitor the noise complaints and consider more shielding when the need is seen. Doesn't commit the town to anything, as the director was saying, and it is clear that the town is talking about it, but I just wanted to sort of have it as a due diligence item if nothing else. Again, it's not mandatory or anything like that and I'd like to have it added as a comment. That's all.
Any objection adding as a comment? Seeing none. Other comments or questions others have about the project or suggestions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the staff report as written with the additional comment number seven, as articulated by Commissioner Kaufman. Andy, did you get that comment about the buffering?
I did.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Finn, second by Commissioner Kaufman. All in favor? All in favor, please raise your hand. It's 11 to 0. I'm sorry, opposed. It was 11 to 0. Next item on the agenda is, next item on the agenda is the, excuse me, the Ronkonkoma Hub. Andy, the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the planning commission, as indicated, the next referral is from the town of Porcaden with regard to the Ronkonkoma Hub. We did have the invited commissioner come and present to you the proposal details, so in order to be brief, I won't go through that part of the staff report. Other two, just reiterate that we do note that there is a regulated plan, which talks about four sub-districts with regard to the Ronkonkoma Hub proposal and within those sub-districts are designed constraints and descriptions of the types of mixed uses and densities proposed. With regard to the staff's analysis, so we did reiterate the proposed distribution of uses in the industrial park. You may recall that at the county planning commission meeting of October 8th, 2010, the commission did review the initial referral as indicated by Commissioner Robert Tolle of the conceptual Hop Dog Industrial Park. The commission did deliberate that and the referral did receive an approval with conditions. Condition number one at the time was for the town to establish within the industrial park a unified approach for density shifting into the hub and to tie that density shift to the preservation of open space and the protection of the region's natural resources. Since that time, we've taken an analysis, the department staff, Department of Economic and Development Plan in Suffolk County, has done an analysis of the town of Porcaden's zoning since the commission's analysis. We believe that at this time, that condition may not still be relevant since the town of Porcaden has moved ahead in revising its code and other sections to preserve open space and transfer density, namely the town's planned retirement community code and the multifamily codes require redemption of pine baron credits when you go for density above the base yield. In addition, the town has recently adopted the land use intensification code, which is a payment in money, so you could call it a land mitigation fee to the town towards the purchase and acquisition of open space land. So we believe these recent programs in combination with each other offset or redirect growth from sensitive areas within the town of Porcaden and sensitive natural resource areas and protect that land and transfer that density to transit-oriented development and other appropriate infrastructure, other appropriate infrastructure-supported areas of the town. So we believe at this time that that condition may not still be warranted. On December 13th, 2013, the commission received a referral from the town of Porcaden with regard to amending chapter 85 of that zoning for the Ronkonkoma Hub. And so that chapter 85 of the Porcaden code zoning was named Ronkonkoma Hub Transit-Oriented Development District and which, within that, they outlined the zoning code amendments that would be required. The commission did receive a referral on that, staff reviewed that. I should have mentioned that the December 2010 referral did include, they drafted that code, which the commission approved. So when it came back in 2013, staff returned that for local determination. The current referral is, includes a request to approve the urban renewal plan. That plan came out and was adopted after a long secret process analyzed of life study as well as recommendations for urban renewal in the area. So the town is referring to that urban renewal plan, which has received a secret. Now, let's see. The secret process concluded there would be, that there would be no significant adverse environmental impacts in terms of infrastructure, i.e. water, potable water, waste water treatment and parking, and indicated that code implementation of the proposed action would improve and enhance community character and aesthetics as opposed to conforming to the existing character of a partially vacant publicly utilized area surrounding the Ronkonkoma Station. The current referral is also for the authorization to change the zoning designation of approximately 54 acres of land to Transit-Oriented Development District. So in total, when staff analyzed that and the prior actions of the commission, staff is recommending, what we put here is a reiteration of the conditional approval from the prior December 13th, that should read 2010, for the land use implementation plans for the Ronkonkoma Hub and the Transit-Oriented Development District and the TOD code. Again, as I indicated, we believe that those conditions that were in the original approval may not be warranted any longer and we're suggesting that we reapprove that without those conditions and make all those conditions comments that we have in this staff report. So the second recommendation of staff is that we reiterate the local determination for the introductory local law 1, 2014, which was amended to chapter 85 zoning for the Ronkonkoma Hub Transit-Oriented Development District, so that's a code amendment which we already L.D., and we'd like to recommend to the commission that that be reiterated. With regard to the urban renewal plan for Ronkonkoma Hub, staff is recommending approval. And with regard to the change of zone for approximately 53.73 acres of land within the Ronkonkoma Hub, staff is also recommending approval. Staff is also recommending six comments with regard to our recommendation to the commission. And we believe that the first comment really is a compliment to the town, that the commission believes that the actions of Porcaden are appropriate and advance the uses of TOD as a planning tool in Suffolk County and that general municipal law provides for Suffolk County Planning Commission to consider inter-community issues, including issues such as compatibility of uses, community character, public convenience, and maintaining of a satisfactory of uses, community character, public convenience, and maintaining of a satisfactory community environment. And it's the belief of the commission that the Ronkonkoma Hub Transit-Oriented Development District strives for greater harmony between the above considerations. That was our first recommended comment. Second comment is from staff to the commission and from the commission to the town, is that continued coordination in Suffolk County Department of Public Works is in order with respect to regional wastewater collection and treatment. We also believe, the third comment, that the proposed TOD code is intended to be applicable to the Ronkonkoma Hub. However, ideally variations of the code could be evaluated for other railroad stations in the town, and each TOD code could be created within the context of that community's character and the surrounding railroad station and appropriate density. So we believe this is a good model that could be rippled out to other train stations within the town. Fourth comment from staff is that the town should consider incorporating green methodologies for stormwater management into the TOD code. Fifth comment is that the commission guidebook on publications regarding public safety and universal design be reviewed and incorporated where appropriate into TOD district code. And the other, last comment, comment six, is that the town of Brookhaven should seek to maintain a dialogue with the town of Islip towards developing a unified approach for redevelopment of the Ronkonkoma Hub. So we are recommending approval of four separate approvals for those actions, as well as six comments that would be applied to those approvals. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Andy. This is Brookhaven project, so we'll give Commissioner, yeah, really, I was gonna say. It's kind of for Commissioner Kelly to get the first word here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Andy, thank you very much. Again, we heard a presentation on this, and a lot of it did focus on the fact that this is a tremendous game changer in terms of economic development and diversification of our housing stock. It's a redevelopment where it's needed, which is near the Long Island Railroad Station. Planning Commissioner Bertoli also talked about theory and practice. I can say that the organization that has won the RFP, the Tritech, has been able to fulfill their renderings. Their finished product and patchogue is very, very much identical to what they promised in theory, so I believe it's an organization that can work with the town and really make those renderings that we saw today come to fruition. My question to you, Andy, is the, it sounded like the conditions that were previously pointed out in the reiteration of conditional approval from December 2013, have those been addressed already? Do we still need that condition in there? Or has that previous condition already been satisfied?
You were talking about the first condition on density shifting?
Yeah, whatever. You have reiteration of conditional approval previously.
Andy, maybe you could just clarify, because you talked about that, and I know there's been a lot of new things, you know, with regard to funding the Makiya Fund and other things in Brookhaven that have happened in the four-plus years since this commission last heard this project. So maybe you can reiterate what the specific recommendation of staff is now with regard to that.
The specific recommendation of staff is to approve the Ronkonkoma Hub land use implementation plan without condition, and to reiterate what we had originally as conditions as comments that we've done.
All right. Andy, again, the reason for that is because the town of Islip issue is certainly, you know, not an unimportant one, but it's one that's been, as was mentioned, somewhat being addressed, and because the density shifting aspect is something you think is taken care of by the town codes that have been adopted since we last heard this, you know, four years ago.
Yes, that is correct. The town has had a continuous dialogue with the town of Islip, so we believe they've addressed that condition, and the town has also, while not absorbing it into the land use implementation plan, has adopted ordinances for shifting density around the town from sensitive environmental areas, areas for this infrastructure, yes.
Okay. And the second condition is that the change of zone comes to the commission, which is what's happening right now.
That's correct.
Right. And then the third condition relates to public safety and performance standards relating to public safety. How is that being addressed?
We have made those, it is no longer the policy of the commission to addition that, so we have made those comments in our current.
That's true. When we did, just for everyone's reminder, when we redid the guidelines relating to, I guess probably two or three years ago now, public safety and energy efficiency are now comments, we actually have seen them in a lot of the codes, which is great, and I know Brookhaven has changed their codes on this. In fact, I talked to supervisor about some other ideas on that, which I'll bring up at some point in the next meeting. But that is true. The guidelines, this commission did change from the old ones to the new ones. Okay. I get that. Okay. Other comments or questions around the table? Commissioner Byrne?
I have a number of comments and a couple of questions. First, when you have smart growth, you've got to think about quality of life of the people living there. So there are a couple of things I'd like to see added to this. One is public space, recreation space, like playgrounds for kids. I mean, I'm assuming this is going to be a new community, so I think there needs to be either a minimal provision of that and/or a link to it if that availability is just outside of its limits. We're trying to reduce trips made by car, so I'd like to see ped bike circulation. The ped is there, but I don't see the bike, especially if it's going to be linking to a wider community, because we are trying to cut the trips. Noise and vibration is another issue. I would think that the building requirements would need some kind of consideration for this, because it's right under a flyway. And then...
Just a question, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Coach, but I don't want to lose that. Andy, I mean, the existing properties there, there are obviously existing properties there. Do you know if there's any restriction, FAA-related restrictions for that property now?
I don't believe there are any restrictions on the, in between the runways.
Runways off to the east, northeast, right? And then lines south, west, north, northeast, depending on the prevailing winds.
They're too far away for the height requirements.
Right. Okay.
Okay. And then the other thing is, I don't see any provision for that link, potential link in the future to the airport, you know, whether it's sub-ground giving access to a tunnel that goes out to the airport, or whatever that needs. So I would like to see at least some potential to create that link, because it seems a critical thing for the future. My questions relate to the transportation study and to the TDR. This is like a really important hub for the whole East End. It's the last place where you've got any reliable service. So do the traffic studies accommodate both access and the extra transportation to both the airport and the train station?
As far as the generation and movement and congestion management, the traffic studies did review that. We did not look at that in detail, but they did conclude that there were some minor mitigations that would be required. The principal thing with regard to traffic and parking was the parking garages and structures that they were going to be allowed to be put into the industrial park.
Andy, do you have the map where you can just show where the parking garage is again? Because I know we have the current satellite view.
Okay. It's going to be roughly center.
Yeah, right.
And there's room on the Islip side also.
Okay. And then, right. And then the other question was about the TDR. Will the developers of this site be required to pay into that fund that you were requiring? Or are they exempt?
The provisions of that are not included for the Ronkonkoma Hub. It was my discussions with the town and Tulio that in final analysis, they felt that the infrastructure costs that would be borne by the building community would outweigh any benefit, would overshadow the benefits of doing TDR into that site, and they felt that they have addressed that concern by the additional code amendments that they have made since the original conception of the Ronkonkoma.
Okay. I guess my consideration of this is that these developers sort of are getting that extra density with, while other developers in other areas where the density is allowed are having to pay into this. So if you want an incentive for them to develop here, maybe, you know, there should be still some consideration to contributing, maybe at a different rate or something, because it might be a blank-to-white, you know, project or something like that. But I think it needs to have some relationship to what's going on in other places as well.
Okay. Thank you. So Glenn, let me see the other comments. I think I wrote down five of them that you had suggested. Let me just see if there's any others around the table that other folks want to raise, or any other tickle of discussion, tickle items. All right. Seeing none, let's go back through the list of things that Glenn suggested. That the town should include, and just remember, of course, this is the PDD, the TOD Development District. Site plans, of course, Andy, come back through and do course, et cetera. But as we, so you'll remember, the commission role here is to, you know, suggest things, not to require things due to the stage. It's with the site plan that we'd say, hey, where is this? But the good thing about doing a TOD statement is we flag it as something that this commission thinks is important for a regional perspective. So including something as a comment here on things you'd like to see in the site plan are perfectly legitimate and appropriate. So the first thing that we have on our list is the town should make sure that there is more, or sufficient, I should say, public space as part of the TOD, such as parks, playgrounds, et cetera. Any objection adding that as a comment?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Michael, any reason for?
You don't like children?
Aside from my floor, no. I had worked for a large national residential builder, and we've done demographic study after demographic study. The target that will be attracted to communities like this are targeted not for the open space and not for the playgrounds, and not for any other amenity, other than the fact that they can get housing and get to work in a timely manner. So adding those costs and burdens is another cost to a community that we're trying to redevelop, which comes with costs as well. And on top of that, the commissioner had stated that there are several, I believe, pocket parks throughout the community, so that's why I would object to it.
Okay. Well, Glenn, is it deeper to fall time?
Yeah, I don't think you can design this larger community and not have children be part of it. And also, young adults will probably want some recreation when they come home, so I think, even if it's not, I'm not talking about Central Park, but, you know, I think some consideration needs to be made, and, you know, I've been also seeing young families having a really hard time finding housing, and they usually have one or two kids, so, and, you know, they're working hard and...
I think for us, for the development of that size, not to ask the town to have sufficient public space is a mistake. They can meet that by pocket parks, they can decide, you know, we'll see this in site plan, but I don't see any reason personally why we shouldn't include sort of the, you know, the comment that the town shouldn't ensure there's sufficient public space. Now, what that means, what works with, to Mike's point, what works for the developer can all be hashed out certainly at the town level, but, you know, speaking for myself, I certainly think that having something in there about parks, it makes sense. Parks are not just kids, they're not just, you know, young families, they're older folks, they're people without kids, too. I mean, everyone likes public space, and, you know, by defining, you know, not defining it as playgrounds, not defining it as just, you know, sandboxes. If you broadly define that, I think it's something that should be included in the development, broadly speaking.
It's only a comment, it's not a...
Well, that's right, at this point.
And I would add, though, and I'm sorry.
Line of entrance.
I'm sorry, Sean Flynn. I'd actually thought about my, Kelly's comments earlier in the conversation, and my gut instinct was that you really need more, and I'm not saying substantial, but something that should be really remarked upon, whether there are individuals that are with children, older people living there, people visiting, pets. I have no idea who may ultimately attend the project or buy units there. I think it's actually a brainstorm idea to do this, and I think just adding the future, the capacity for people's enjoyment is just icing on the cake, and it really should be presented as such.
All right. Thank you for that. Other thoughts, comments? All right. If none, we'll put this to a vote on the comment that, you know, of adding the comment that the town should ensure there's sufficient public space, just parks, playgrounds, et cetera. Please raise your hand if you support putting that in as a comment. Raise your hand. Six, opposed. Five, we will add that in.
It's a nail biter.
Really? For public space. All right. The next one is the bike circulation plan.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't disagree.
The bike circulation plan, Commissioner Finn will be questioned. Thank you. The bike circulation plan, Glenn, as you spoke about a bike circulation plan, perhaps you could just speak for another moment about that to remind us what the issue is.
This whole TOD is based on reducing car trips, and the goal is 25%. So by having both internal bike circulation and also to any, you know, destination that makes sense, that's within a close area, should be part of the plan.
What I would suggest, I would personally be supportive of something that said the town should just explore, making, you know, making sure that there's bike access throughout the thing. I think for us to get more into the weeds than that would be, you know, is personally, you know, would be too much. So I think, again, you see this in site plan, but to note that, you know, bike circulation is an important part. Hey, if this is TOD, there's another part of transit also, it's called walking, and there's another part of transportation also, it's called biking. And I think this is probably certainly, you know, knowing Tulio and them, certainly something that they're going to think about, but, or would like to include. So the issue, what I would suggest is that we just say the town should explore bike access throughout the district. Okay? Any objection adding that? Seeing none, we'll add that. The next one you raised, Glenn, was noise attenuation due to airplane. I think we heard from Andy and Commissioner Coffin that that may not be as much an issue. Certainly, you know, there are existing properties there, they don't have noise attenuation, they don't know that we need to actually add anything on that. Is that okay with you? Okay, so that's not reached. The other thing is the length of the airport. We talked about that a little bit. I think the length of the airport is really on the south side, on the Islip side of the project, and I don't know that they're really, I mean, I think someone asked Commissioner Bertoli directly about that, whether there was a need, you know, on the north side, but the whole idea is to link right from the transit area, which is on the south side of this property, to the airport. That's, again, Islip, so it's another step away, but the whole community itself is all within, what, maybe two blocks or so of that transit hub. So if there was a link at the train station going south through the Islip piece of property, I don't know that we need to add anything on that. But is anyone else, sorry, go ahead, Mike.
We do call for it in the master plan, that's one of the 108 recommendations, and I talked extensively about that in some of the comments, but you're talking about logistics, and it may not be viable what we're talking about.
Well, it's more just on the Brookhaven side. The Brookhaven side is, I mean, the train tracks are the divider, so, I mean, there's nothing that you'd ask Brookhaven to do here, I don't think. It's really, it's really Islip, you see.
And it looks like there's adequate pedestrian access. I mean, if they were to tunnel or a little walkway.
We saw the schematics, and schematics are schematics, but they were, you know, as Commissioner Kelly said, you know, amazing to see what a difference this project will make for that area. Yes.
My only question is, isn't the existing train station and also the bus drop-off to the north of the tracks?
The train station setup is right on the tracks, or actually, the train station on either side of the track.
So the main link to the station right now is on the north side?
To, the main link from the, to the airport would need to be on the south side, so it's from the tracks down south to the airport.
Okay. But right now, the station and the bus drop-off is on the north.
Well, that'll change something.
The, well, there's buses on the north and the tracks themselves, I guess, for a bifurcate, but I don't know, that's all MTA stuff, right? That's all MTA stuff. Now, obviously, they're going to help be part of this plan, but the connection is an MTA issue and then an Islip issue. I don't know if there's anything you'd ask Brookhaven to do particularly, other than make a nice place where people want to live.
And work with Islip.
And obviously, work with Islip, of course.
MTA can work with Islay and do shared services.
Agreed.
Which is what they should do.
Which is what they should do.
All right. Is there still something you want to raise? We'll take a vote on that, please.
No, definitely.
Okay. And then the last piece of it was the town should balance the public benefit of the TOD with payments relating to density. That was the other issue you raised. Any objection adding that as a comment?
Yes.
Okay. Please discuss. I'll let Commissioner Kelly go, and then Commissioner Gershwin.
I'm sure I'll say exactly what I'm gonna say.
Yeah, the cost to run to the Southwest Sewer along with the cost of the infrastructure that's going in here is sizable, and that's what's needed to make this redevelopment work. So to add another burden on top of that, to transfer development rights into this would really stretch the economics of it, and that's a real issue.
Commissioner Gershwin, anything to add?
I don't...
That works. I would say the difference between...
Ultimately, the cost we add is just a cost that the resident's gonna pay. So why are we adding cost to the people that are gonna live there? They're building sewers, they're building, they're building all these items, so what are we doing?
I mean, the county's helping with the sewer connection.
Let's just add another tax because we'll pay it?
But I think the important thing here is that this land, in order to make, this is not virgin property, right? I mean, in order to make this actually something that's a regional center, that's valuable, that is, you know, a real TOD that can attract people and jobs, there's a lot of property that needs to be bought, and that is not, you know, I think the issue is, I think the town, I believe, can balance this without us weighing in on it. The cost to put this whole thing together, buying up land and making infrastructure improvements here are very, very significant. And, you know, that in itself is a public benefit, that in itself is a public thing, but again, my own opinion.
Two things. I thought there was a lot of public subsidy for the wastewater treatment, was my understanding. So I don't think that's under percent on the developer. There's a lot on the taxpayer. The other thing is, I think your comment about this is an already developed area and there's extra cost in that is a valid one, but I think there are also a lot of other sites that are like that. So I'm just trying to be even-handed. So if that is an incentive, we forgive the purchase of development rights, then maybe that should be beyond this project. Because I totally agree, we want to redevelop existing development rather than virgin property. So, but so, but what I see here is that this development gets the exemption, but maybe the others don't. So I'm just looking like, I think there's a need for fairness, and that the zoning needs to apply that.
Okay, thank you for the comment. Commissioner Finn.
Two things. One, with this, let's talk about this project in specifics. Can you imagine for a minute if this was a developer's own motion, where this project would be? It would be more bold, like every other project on Long Island. And that's why we don't, that's why we have an affordability issue, we're not building anything. And to your point about the benefit the windfall and the developers are gonna receive, we have a mechanism that Adrian and David pointed out at the top of, when they arrived here, is we have a tax mechanism that goes and uses tax dollars to buy open space, to preserve land, to prevent that development from happening. So here, where everybody's in consensus that this is an area that we should be developing, and it's a transitory development, which is another euphemism that we use here on the island, so we should, as a commission, should be all supportive of this project. And we shouldn't get into the minutia of the detail of site plan, because we're not at that point yet. So when that point comes in, if you want to add to that, but putting a major obstacle like transient-oriented development on top of a project on the town's own motion at the county level, where we don't control zoning, and we don't control planning, to give approval, the town and the villages do a perfect job of killing projects. Here at the county, we shouldn't be that governing body that's gonna put ultimately the wet blanket on top of a project that's already five years in the design stage, and that's, again, on the town's own motion. So I think there's a slippery slope if we keep bringing up this point. We are attaching this to sewer infrastructure, the county is doing their part to see that it happens, and this is what we want. We don't want nitrates loaded up into the ground, we all understand that this is going to a sewer treatment plant. So I think we should just, we should approve the motion as what's on the table.
Okay. The, any other comments? Okay. The proposal was to add the comment, you know, the town should balance public benefit of TOD with density payments. I guess we'll take an up or down vote on whether the commission wants to add that to this resolution. All in favor of adding that to the resolution, please raise your hand. Okay, so we will not add that. We do have, I mean, let me just say with regard to Commissioner Finn's point, that remember, I think it's a good thing if there's things in particular with regard to site plan that we want to add, that we want the town to be sure to consider, we'd rather do it now than wait till site plan. Then they already have it all sketched out, they've had, you know, all the rendering's done, all the engineering done, et cetera.
We're not looking at a site.
What's that?
We're not looking at a site.
Exactly, which is why I think this is, this is the right time to add things like we did, like make sure there's enough public parks, make sure there's bike access, because then they know that's gonna be something we're gonna get coming back, and they can take that into account, and we've seen this project into project. And we say there are things that matter at a regional level on some of this stuff, you know, it often gets into the projects, and that's what we want. At the end of the day, we want to be approving projects because they're good projects, and they're better projects when we applying on things that matter to us at the zoning level. So, that said, we now have a staff report that has, for approval, with eight comments. It's approval of the urban renewal plan, approval of the change zone, approval of the land use implementation plan, and reiteration of local determination with regard to chapter eighty-five of the town in Quogue. Anyone else who wish to be heard on this? Seeing none, I'm looking most to adopt the staff report as amended. Motion by Commissioner Kelly, second by Commissioner, I should tell her, I haven't called her name for that. All in favor, please raise your hand. Finn, where were you on? Eleven, okay. That's eleven to zero. Commissioner Lansdale's gonna provide a two-minute update on the planning staff, and then we're going to move to the final item, which is the Katniss project. Commissioner Lansdale.
Thank you, Chairman Cologne. Furthering the county executives' agenda reclaim our water, Suffolk County was chosen as one of four places in the country to participate in the IBM Smarter Cities Challenge. They kicked off their engagement, it's a three-week engagement with the county, they kicked it off this Monday, their meeting with stakeholders. I'd like everyone on the commission to know that you're invited to participate in a discussion with IBM on Monday at four o'clock at the Denison Building. Let me know if you are available to attend that meeting. Their focus is specifically looking at ways to reduce nitrogen from wastewater from septic systems and cesspools, and we look forward to hearing the results.
I'm sorry, what time is the meeting, um, again?
Four p.m.
And that's a specific meeting with the IBM consultants and the planning commission, so please let us know if you can or cannot be there, because the IBM people are holding that time for us right now. They are meeting, as Sarah will get into, with some of the other, we'll kind of explain later, and some others, so.
Right, they're meeting with federal officials, state officials, county officials, towns and villages, and others. In addition to our work with IBM, we are also embarking on revising and updating the agricultural stewardship management plan to reduce nitrogen from agriculture, and looking to engage the same stakeholders that were engaged in the plan development, I think over a decade ago, and others who are interested in working with us. So it would be environmentalist as well as the agricultural community. We're working on finishing the agricultural farmland protection plan, and also working with the cultural affairs office to promote the Craft Shoot Film Festival, which is...
She says that's such a strength.
We're engaging local residents to produce short films of one to two minutes, public service announcements about our water quality initiative and our water quality crisis, specifically around the themes of over-fertilizing and the septic system and cesspool issue. And the winners will receive, the films will be premiered during National Septic Week, which is the third week in September, at the Cinema Arts Center, and winners will receive a golden throne, a toilet, as the prize. We are also looking to advance the local law forty-one that was passed in 2007. I mentioned this last, at our last planning commission meeting. We've updated, this is where there's signage that's required to be at the home and garden centers near fertilizer, and we've updated the signage, and we're looking for volunteers from the planning commission to go out and look at and inspect the Home Depots laws and local centers to see if they're in compliance, and then to bring them into compliance. So I actually have packages for everyone on the commission that are geographically focused, and I look forward to your participation in this effort.
As we talked about last month, there's no reason that all of us can't help with this. It helps get the word out around the county, because where we are, all of us are so geographically dispersed, and this is really a simple thing. This takes, you know, ten minutes or something like that per place. So is it, let me just ask you, Sarah, is there a particular date that you're looking for this to happen? I know we talked last time about a specific date, but is this more just general?
If it could be done in the month of June, so that we could generalize that, the responses that would be helpful, and it could then be instructed for staff. Our plan is to then go back in the fall, when there's a big push to fertilize again, and make sure, again, that the stores are in compliance, and if they're not, then take the direction.
So Sarah, if we go there, they're not in compliance, then what?
We actually have a package of, we have a package of materials to help them become compliant. We have to hang up a sign, we have brochures available that you can then give the store, and then the idea would be then to go back in the fall and make sure that they're still in compliance.
Thank you, and as Sarah mentioned, the IBM thing is a really important effort of the county that only has really happened thanks to Sarah's leadership in applying to that, and the county executive's leadership in helping push that through. And it's a real opportunity for the county to leverage free resources. These people came from all around the world here to Suffolk County to work on this project for the next couple of weeks, and I think they're off to a good start in the last couple of days, and it's very, very exciting in terms of helping push things forward, in terms of where we need to go on wastewater.
At the hub.
Okay. Anyway, any questions for Director Lansdale? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to the next item, our agenda, which is the Katniss plan. Both Vice Chair Spizito and I, because of our prior involvement in this project, need to refuse ourselves for the county legal advice, and so second Vice Chair Kelly will run this part of the meeting. It's a mouthful.
Why is she laughing? He's in great shape, I believe, right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, the next referral, as indicated, is the Katniss Long Island Two LLC project, referred to as from the town of Brookhaven, a jurisdiction for the commissions of the subject properties adjacent to Sills Road, which is County Road one oh one. Let me just be a little different, go through the slides, just so you know what we have available as we give the staff report. This is an aerial of the subject property, along with breakdown of what the tax map parcels look like. Subject property is outlined in red. That is a little closer view. You can see some of the land uses around the subject property, we'll talk about those in a little while. So there's the subject property outlined in red. Okay, so this would be the zoning for the subject property. As you can see, most of the area is zoned light industrial around the subject property. There is a little bit of light, I'm sorry, there's a little bit of L two in the lower right-hand corner of the slide. There's A one zoning way off to the east of the subject property, and you can see the rest of the zoning pattern there. Okay, this is what the soils look like on the subject property, just part of our analysis, we took a look at the soils. Subject property lies within two school districts. This is the site plan for the referral, and that's it. So let me just leave that on the site plan for now and go through the staff report. The applicants are seeking special permit approval from the town of Brookhaven Town Board for the construction and operation of a natural gas-fired electric-generated facility. The proposed facility complies with all applicable dimensional and special permit criteria with the reception of a few, with the reception of relief for the height restriction on a few components will be needed. The subject site is an eighty-one point three acre parcel located in the L Industrial One Zone, which is Light Industrial, and that is located in town of Brookhaven. We gave you some history with regard to the application in the subject parcel, and let me just say that there is an existing electric generating facility located on the adjacent Katniss Long Island LLC parcel. That existing electric generating facility was previously authorized by the town board's special permit in oh six, and site plan approval again in oh six, and that was all subsequent to a Suffolk County Planning Commission review and local determination at the regularly scheduled meeting on June first, two thousand and five. In your package is the local determination. Okay, we gave you a little bit of description of what the combined site plan would incorporate, that was excerpted from the staff report, so, I'm sorry, from the referral, so I won't go into that. We'll go into some site issues. Stormwater runoff from the complicated development is proposed to be collected and recharged to groundwater via proposed dry wells and retention ponds. Wastewater from the proposed facility is to, is intended to be treated on-site with sanitary, in accordance with Suffolk County Department of Health Service standards. Facility-processed wastewater that would require off-site disposal will be collected in holding tanks for subsequent off-site transport for treatment by a licensed waste hauler. Access to the proposed electric generating facility is to be from an unrestricted, non-signalized ingress-egress to Zorn Boulevard, which is a town road. There is no emergency access proposed. The subject site is presently wooded, characterized as pine oak forest, and there is some disturbed land. There are overgrown cleared areas surrounding recharge wells, and they exist on the subject property. There is also an existing electrical transformer station on the subject property. The Long Island Railroad right-of-way bounds the property to the north. Beyond the railroad is property associated with the Brookhaven Rail Terminal. To the east is light electric transmission right-of-way and land in the Starlight Industrial Park, land now formerly belonging to Suffolk County, buffers Suffolk County facilities, including the Yad Bank Correctional Facility and the John J Foley Nursing Facility, and that is located to the east as well. Industrial development is found adjacent to the west on Old Dock Road, that's the Sills Industrial Park. I'm gonna give you that. Okay, so we have the Sills Industrial Park to the west, and there's regional commercial shopping further and beyond to the west. To the south is the industrial park development known as Zorn Industrial Park. The proposed electric generating facility will be located approximately, will be located approximately three miles from the nearest residences, and that is across Long Island Railroad right-of-way and Sills Road, and that's to the north and west. The proposed project is not located in the Suffolk County Pine Barren Zone. The project is not located in a special groundwater protection area. The site is situated over Hydrogeology Management Zone Three. The subject property is not in a state-critical environmental area. There are no state-regulated or mapped freshwater, state or local mapped freshwater wetlands that occur on-site. In pursuit of the town of Brookhaven clearing restrictions, the applicable minimum requirement percentage of the parcel that must remain natural and undisturbed is thirty percent. The project is proposed to comply with that requirement. With respect for, with respect to the staff analysis, with regard to general municipal law considerations, it is believed the staff that the proposed electric generating facility would neither prevent the orderly and reasonable use of adjacent properties or properties in the surrounding area, nor would it impair their value, since the facility is consistent with existing development in the area, and the parcels, and the parcel supports adequate buffering in order to cite the facility. Moreover, the facility is proposed to be in close proximity to supporting infrastructures such as major transportation corridors and utility interconnection points, including water, electric, and natural gas. The proposed facility will comply with applicable operations and performance standards such as the town's noise ordinance and applicable local state, federal air and water quality standards. With respect to the local comprehensive plan recommendations, it is believed for staff that the proposed action conforms to the recommendations of the town of Brookhaven Comprehensive Plan, that is their nineteen ninety-six plan. The L One Industrial District expressly permits electric generating facilities by special permit. The subject property is suited for the proposed facility as it provides for adequate buffering and distance from potential sensitive receptors. The subject site is eighty-one point three acres and greatly exceeds the town's twenty acre minimum lot requirement for electric generating facilities in the L One District. for electric generating facilities in the L One District. With regard to Suffolk County Planning Commission guideline considerations, it is indicated that stormwater runoff from the contemplated electric power generating facilities proposed to be collected and recharged to groundwater via proposed dry wells and retention ponds. The petitioners should be encouraged to review the County Planning Commission publication on managing stormwater and natural vegetation and green methodologies and incorporate into proposed where practical design elements contain therein. Early review by Suffolk County Department of Health Services for sanitary wastewater and processed wastewater treatment is warranted, and the petition should be directed to contact and begin dialogue with Suffolk County Department of Health Services as early as possible. Staff is recommending, with the above being considered, approval of the special exception for petition for Katniss Long Island Two LLC with the following comments. First comment being that the petitioners should be encouraged to review the Planning Commission publication on managing stormwater through natural vegetation and green methodologies. Second comment is that the petitioners should be directed to contact and begin dialogue with the County Department of Health Services as early as possible. That is the staff report, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Andy. As this is a Brookhaven matter, I will add my comments. And again, not being an expert in the energy field, I'm looking at this solely on the fact that... On the question, is this site appropriate for this use? And I believe it is. I do not see the height matter as an issue, as staff had pointed out as well. So at that point, I open it up for comments.
Thank you, Chairman. I have to agree with you on this one. I think we... I have a lot of concerns about this, but they are, shall we say, outside of our purview and what we're supposed to look at and what our jobs are here. We have limits on our decision parameters and what we can consider, again, despite broader and maybe wider concerns. We're bound by our rules as to what the issue is before us. This is the Town of Brookhaven bringing something to us, if I remember correctly. Actually, no, I'm sorry about that. It is a site plan review. If it was something else dealing with policy, we'd have different concerns. But this is a site plan review. It's a special exception permit, and that pretty much kind of shuts down, if you will, or limits our review to the environmental issues, to the... In terms of what's going on in terms of the land use. Is this an appropriate site for this? We heard Mr. Frinley talking about this is basically an industrially developed area, and there are very, very few houses anywhere nearby. It's commercial to the nth degree. It's not surrounded by any features that would, in my opinion, call into question the compatibility of this. And again, despite other concerns that I have, when I'm looking at it in terms of special exceptions and site plans, my conclusion each time is it comes back to this is an approvable plan, given the context that is coming in. Again, that's separate from some of my other concerns.
Thanks, Mike. Any other comments?
Yeah, one concern, it's really a regional concern too, is the supply of natural gas. Being a farmer on the East End there, I know there's plenty of natural gas here, but the problem is the infrastructure to carry that gas to Long Island, and this involves all of us that, you know... We're put on a waiting list as commercial farmers to have access to that. You know, I managed to get it, you know, last year at both of our places, and I know other people are still on this, you know, so they're using oil, whatever, and, you know, it's three times the cost, so I mean, it's a regional problem. The capacity to carry this natural gas is just a concern overall. You know, I think this is a good project. It's... It generates so much more efficient than what they had in the 1950s, but just an overview, it is a big problem. And I'm not sure exactly... I'm a little vague on are they going to tap into the existing gas infrastructure, or I'm a little confused there.
It's a new line.
That's to be determined, but there has been talk about a new gas main being brought in, but the root of that main has not been concluded, and there may be other options.
Thanks, Carl. Gwynn?
Just a couple of things. It calls for variance and setback, and I'm wondering why that's necessary because the parcel was quite large. I can understand the height because you need whatever the height is to properly operate, but it seems like they have enough space, so I didn't understand that variance. Also, the staff pointed out that there is no emergency access, and this is like a very important facility, so I'm wondering if that could be looked at. For the site, one of the things I'm a little concerned about is that there's a lot of open space on the proposed site, and that's not where they're locating the infrastructure. They're cutting down the forest area to install, so it totally doesn't make sense to me in terms of carbon footprint to... You know, when you've got all this open space, I'd like to know a little bit more like why those fields could have been used instead of cutting down a forest. And then my final question, and I... This is a question actually for... I don't know if we have jurisdiction over this, but it seems to have a major regional impact as cost benefit. And what is the right way of providing efficient, cost-effective energy? I know in some areas, a conservation plan meant that they didn't have to build new plants, or, you know, what is the relationship of renewable energy to this kind? So I'm not opposed to the plan at all, but I would like, you know, we need to provide for the energy needs, but are there... Have they looked at alternative ways of getting to that point? Because it has a huge impact on taxpayer and the cost of doing business if it's just going to raise the cost of electricity.
Mr. Chairman, I can address the first point. I can't address the second point. The first point is technically the Long Island Railroad right-of-way is considered to be a residential zone, so every time you have a use adjacent to a Long Island Railroad right-of-way, you need to have residential setbacks, so they need a variance to approach the railroad with their site plan. So that answers why they need a setback variance. High variances are obvious for building a section, but I can't address the second issue.
Thanks, Andy. Mike?
Trying to address what Glynnis is bringing up, again, I have very, very great concerns about this, but each time I'm driven back to, if you will, the legal aspect of it. I'm looking at the General Municipal Law 239L, which is our jurisdiction over here, and I'm looking at the definitions and things like that, basically what we're supposed to do. And they can include in their community and county-wide considerations regarding compatibility of various land uses with one another, and I think this is compatible. Traffic generated characteristics of various land uses, I don't think it's going to be high traffic. Impact of proposed land uses on existing and proposed county or state institutional or other uses. I don't think this is going to impact Foley. It's closed. I'm not sure the prisoners are going to really worry about it at the correctional facility. Protection of community character as regards predominant land uses. It's commercial. It's industrial. That's one of the larger industrial areas on the island. It's smaller than the Hullock Industrial Park, but it is one of the larger ones. You've got population density as one of the criteria, and the relation between residential and non-residential areas. This is not a residential area. It talks about drainage. That's going to be considered. I don't think this plant is going to give off much runoff, though it is obviously a concern for us, and I think it was mentioned in the staff report. Then you also have to look at official municipal and county development policies as may be expressed through comprehensive plans, capital programs, regulatory measures. I'm not sure that this varies with any county plan, and it seems to match up with the town's plan. Then the final matter that may be considered is public convenience to governmental efficiency and to achieving and maintaining a satisfactory community environment. I'm not exactly sure what that language is. I did research it a little bit, and I'm still a little bit puzzled, but each time I look at 239L and I get torn apart by it, it's saying this is a land use, given this context of what we're looking at. The broader purview of fuel oil instead of gas, the broader purview of the fact that we don't have enough gas infrastructure here. For example, we only have two primary plants that supply gas to the New York metropolitan area. One of them almost was destroyed in Hurricane Sandy. A third one needs to be built. I think there's one coming online soon, but I'm not sure about that one. But yeah, we are tight on supply lines. We're not tight on supply nationally. We're tight upon supply lines. On the other hand, I use propane for my heating, and while the supplies were adequate, we couldn't get them to the Northeast this year, and I actually was rationed on my heat. Each time I come back to, you know, there's issues with this plant, or is it needed, but I'm not sure it's in our purview at this point in time, each time I come back to that. And it disturbs me tremendously, but, you know, each time I come back to this, what is our jurisdiction?
Right. To Gwynn's point, and just going around the table, Council, do you want to address the...
Yes, I just wanted to jump in quickly to say that actually, Commissioner Hoffman, you did a really good job of going through each of the criteria.
I hate myself for it.
You did it very complete, but it was good to keep the board on task because our mission here is much more narrow than determining what the economic benefits and the appropriate energy sources are for the area. You have a specific application before you, and you really have to make a determination based on what's before you on those criteria that he's laid out.
Thanks, Council. Gwynn, another comment, or?
Who does review it for the regional significance plan? If it's not us.
The question that you've asked is much broader, so you get to look at the project and figure out how it complies with our regional goals. It's a totally different matter to consider all of the kind of fuel that's out there and what kind of applies to the community. It's a much broader question that you're asking.
I have seen municipalities, though, sort of readdress this issue in sort of different ways, so I guess my question is, who at county level would consider this?
A lot of this stuff actually comes under FERC. Okay, that's federal programs. That's part of the problem.
Again, I think our charge today is, is this site appropriate?
Mr. Chairman, it's a great question that Gwynn is asking, but it doesn't hold any water in what we have to do today. I'd like to go straight to a motion.
Agreed. I'd like to address one of Gwynn's concerns, which would be the emergency access. Does anyone have any comment or concern or question to add as a comment, perhaps encourage the town to examine an emergency access route as a comment?
This is going to sound really, really strange, but I actually would not advocate that. For one, we're very open to this. These are important power plants, and from, if you will, a defense capability, you want to have one entrance, not multiple entrances. Maybe they can be opened up or something like that, but we've dealt with... Well, I have dealt in the past with the Breski Airport, and they actually shut down some of their entrances, straightened out some of the curves on a road, and actually essentially set up a gun position to defend the base against terrorists and things like that. If you want to have one entrance to this kind of facility, you're talking over 1,000 megawatts of power. I mean, as long as it's wide enough, that's good enough, but you don't want to have too many entrances and exits. You have had, for example, out west, people shooting up transformers and shooting up power stations. It's... I don't want to say national security or anything like that, but it's jumping to me.
Thanks, Mike. Gwynn, does that satisfy your comment and concern?
Yes, but I'd also like the clearing issue raised.
That is...
So how would we... Your comment?
I'm proposing as a comment that they consider the site plan to minimize the clearance of forests.
All right. How about we take that comment and we vote on that by adding a comment? Andy, did you get a point of stuff, say is that?
I did. I thought maybe Mary, if you might want to have the town consider clustering the use in order to preserve more open space on the site. I think that's what you're going to go with.
Well, it's also weird they've located it because look at all the open space, and they don't have the facility there, so it's a kind of... I would just call it a reconfiguration.
Reconfiguration.
Essentially, they're taking undisturbed land and clearing it, and their clearing land... The cleared land is being ignored. I mean, it doesn't make certain sense in terms of the site plan, but in terms of preserving land...
Again, Andy, do you have that... Can you read back that comment that you...
Consider reconsidering... Sorry, consider reconfiguring the site plan to create less disturbance to the naturally occurring vegetation.
Is everybody okay with adding that?
I can work with Mary.
I'm going to vote on just adding that as a comment. Is that a comment? Okay. Adding that as a comment?
Can I comment on that?
Certainly.
I'm not really okay with that. I mean, if you look, the proposed plant has probably already been designed 1,000 times, so we're asking them to re-figure the plant. You can see how it takes up the space on the property. There's already natural and undisturbed land. This has been thought out 1,000 times before it got to us. I think throwing something in there so it's just another curveball at town level is silly. There's natural undisturbed land, and let's move on with it. It doesn't make any sense to put a comment in that's not going to hold order and only just drag things.
Thanks, Kevin. All right, so let's put that up for a vote. Gwynn's comment is, are all in favor of adding the additional comment of open space, as Andy had mentioned? Let's put that up for a vote. All in favor? Seeing two.
All against?
All against? Seven opposed. So seven to two, we won't add that as a comment. If I could at this point, get a motion on the overall application. Seeing Commissioner Gershewitz approving the application as described by staff?
Yes.
All right. Second? Ray? Ashetella? All in favor?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
All right, all in favor?
No vote.
No votes? The motion carries, we'll approve it. All right, thank you all. Next.
Anything else that we need to discuss? Carl, don't forget, we have a farm meeting, a 1:30 farm year on Friday. Anything else anyone wants to raise? Please let us know if you can't make the July meeting, just because we've got a... I know that's in the heart of sort of schedules and occasions, et cetera. Also, please join us for the two events on June 16th if you're able, and this Monday... So June 16th, remember, it's at Denison Building and at Northport Library. If you're interested, it was in the email that I sent out before this meeting. And most importantly, please let Sarah know whether you can or cannot make the IBM meeting at 4:00 PM on Monday at the Denison Building. Will that be in the planning, Sarah?
No, in media room.
Okay, media room, sets on the basement level in Denison. Do us a favor and let Sarah know either way, so we know whether you're scheduled. All of... Anything else to discuss? If not, thank you all for a long meeting, directed meeting, and for all your service to the counties. And Sarah, for lots of stuff, if you haven't put your bullets up or your stickers up for the goals, please do so on TAN-MO. Is everyone leaving? Yeah, I've got one in TAN-MO. Christopher Kelly, Senator Mary, all in favor? I guess 10-0. Thank you.